And five thousand dollars for each property regardless of the condition of each property. And what it doesn't say is if the city of Niagara Falls has possession of these properties and they're being sold to a separate government agency, the only figure I got to work with is five thousand dollars each property. It brings up the question is that apparently there's been a lot of selling of city-owned property throughout the city, especially downtown. I'd like to know as an example is that we had a park where now it's being constructed for Starbucks. And I've noticed that initially there was certain agreements with the Seneca Nation to take over the Niagara Falls Convention Center. And I was promised that as soon as they built their hotel and casino, they would relinquish this property back to the citizens of Niagara Falls, city-owned property. That didn't happen. Instead, they went to take on the place called Fall Street Fair. And I am quite frankly appalled that the city is selling off all of downtown Niagara Falls. Is it going to come to the point to where there's an admission fee to go see the seventh wonder of the world? Are they going to have a fence with Bob Dwyer on it? Okay? All this property in downtown prime Niagara Falls was sold to the Seneca Nation. Then Smokin' Joe from the Tuscarora Nation bought up another third. Now we have a third left. Now, the proposal is sell it to this billion-dollar company. I don't recall the exact name of it, but this project to sell off the remainder third of downtown Niagara Falls. I'm sick of this. Why isn't that these properties being transferred or sold off to another government agency to so-called rehab them? And that's debatable whether or not they do it. Where's the guarantees? After these houses are either demolished, rehabbed, built back up, where's the guarantees? What's going to happen with the property? What if they decide it's in their best interest to take over these properties and demolish them and then build a building for their own private interest? Where's the guarantees? And when they violate the guarantees, what do we have? Okay? Is there repercussions? Do they have to pay the citizens of Niagara Falls a few million dollars to take it off of our taxes? And what's happening to our tax base here? The Indians aren't paying taxes. Tuscarora, Seneca, and now the proposed park? Well, we had a park. It's being sold to Starbucks and that whole surrounding area. And on the street going over to the bridge, I don't recall the name of the street, they took half the street and built a sidewalk on one side and like a trail, I can presume is for some kind of one of those train buses things that drive around near the falls.
Henry, I'm going to give you a couple more minutes because we have a lot of people. This is about Restore New York grant and really you should be speaking specifically today. You got off track a little. Okay?
Speak to what's the public hearings about, please.
My biggest opposition is this. I'm a private citizen. This concerns me because I'm a citizen in Niagara Falls. How come I don't have the opportunity to say to the city, pick out the best house out of that whole group right in the middle of the other ones and say, here's my five thousand dollars. Make it even six thousand dollars. Okay? How come I don't have that opportunity? And more so, how come all the citizens gathered here today don't have the right to interfere with this, the selling off of city property, both in the agenda items concerning what you're talking about and for the goodwill of the citizens? This is destroying our tax base. Our taxes aren't going down. They're going up in all directions. The water bill is phenomenal out of the world. And how are we going to support all this spending? Okay?
Henry, can you kind of wrap it up with the 30 seconds?
Okay. Well, this is what concerns me. All these citizens here are expected to roll over and give up their right to make an offer on this property. How come the citizens didn't vote on whether or not to do this? This is a public hearing and if somebody wants to buy one of these properties, they aren't able to address that issue directly.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. And I just want to make one comment. Restore New York grant was a grant that was open to anyone, any developer or anything that wanted to put a program together. So, so there were a number of proposals brought to the city with the Restore New York. You had an opportunity. It was in the state. You could go to the state and you could see how to apply. So it's not like any rest.
How am I supposed to know about this?
Well, you got to, you got to do your research.
But... I mean, Restore... I guess into the research if I...
All's I'm saying, the Restore New York grant was open to communities and people in those communities and developers in those communities. This was not a grant that was just limited to a few people. You had to submit a grant application to be considered for this grant. And that's what the public hearing is about. So, thank you, Henry. I just wanted to make sure people were clear on that.
Well, I don't consider it fair because how am I supposed to know about a grant coming up and this whole thing that you're talking about?
We have to go to the next speaker, Henry. Thank you.
If you're, they hear my D B so fancy, so please excuse me if I don't pronounce this correctly, but I believe it's Jacqueline Prior. Thank you. Hello. My name is Jacqueline Prior. I don't know if it's recommended that you say your address anymore, but I live in Niagara Falls all my life. I got a couple of things to discuss. Just like the gentleman said, how is anybody to know? Well, you'll know if you go to Coffee with Chris because Mr. Spanbauer was there and they were talking about land banking. And at this particular speech, it was, I don't know where they were from, but they were having a program down on the 616 or 716 for people to get their paperwork in order and stuff like that to purchase homes in one week. This program, I know they used to have it on 16th Street. It used to take six weeks, if not three months. Okay? But who knew about that? If I didn't go to the Coffee with Chris, I don't know, but, and everybody don't have the website. And it's not fair to everyone. But I don't know how many people came, but the gentleman told me a story. He said, you know, this program was in Lockport and that this lady, she applied for it and she worked as a dispatch for the city. Her father was a fireman or somebody or whatever, and he had the skills to help her with the house or whatever, and she was able to get the house. Well, if anybody, I think she had the ability to get a loan, to get help, and I don't think she needed that kind of money being spent out of government money that should be helping other people who's not so fortunate. Also too, I have, I spoke to the N W A C P. I have spoken with a lot of the civil groups. Yes?
I'm going to say the same. Speakers remember, this public hearing is specific to Restore New York grant.
I'm talking about that.
It has to be specific.
This is specific because we're talking about restoring Niagara or Niagara Falls, but the whole thing is if you don't have the opportunity, and I'll check, now this is a mind blower that nobody wants to address, like I said, the N W A C P and other groups, is that about in 2016 or 17, I don't know if people here remember when they Cornerstone Bank down in Lewiston was saying, come on, come on, get this five hundred dollar loan around Christmas time. And they had flocks and flocks and flocks of families going down. So they went and got the loans. It was supposed to be to help your credit and, you know. So I took out the loan. I paid my loan. I paid my loan early. You think I can get help? You think I could get a loan? You think I could get anything? And I own my own home. Okay? But the other people that didn't pay their loans, you have destroyed many people's credit. So they would not even apply or...
This is about Restore New York.
What I'm saying, this has happened to the citizens of Niagara Falls.
But that doesn't have anything to do with Restore New York.
These properties are restoring Niagara. Now, if you really want to restore Niagara, I have given this program to Mr. Lori, to the city, and this is build up, build up.
Okay, Jackie, I'll tell you one more time. So what you're doing, you're doing a great community initiative with that, but this is specific to this grant. This is the only thing this public hearing is for.
But it all comes together. If you, these applications and you talk about getting a whatever, but if you can't get over square one because your credit is messed up, and who, and I call it predatory lending. Okay? We know what that is. And that's exactly what it was. And so nobody addressed it. So I believe that all these projects need to be shut down. You already know I come here all the time. I have property that I have been taking care of with under Seth in his program, which, let me just show you with the programs, how they turn over. Okay? This is the building of Niagara Falls. I lived out on Fifth Street.
Jackie, again, this is not, it has to be specific to Restore New York grant. Do you have any concerns with the grant or do you want to speak for or against the grant? That's what I need to hear.
Definitely against anything that's coming out of community development because it's very corrupt. I have paper...
This is not out of community development.
What I'm saying, anything that has to do with city-owned property, any land, you know what I tell people? You're getting all these high rises with all these apartments, but you know what? You'll never need to buy a lawn mower because you won't have no lawn. So who, you know...
Anything else about this grant?
Plenty, plenty. And I got paperwork to prove that...
I think what you're talking more about is good for the community versus this grant.
Well, you got, one more question. Like I was before, when you was coming in, I was asking you out of paper, now is the paper contradicting themselves or what? Because it says that all these properties are going to be for basically vacation rentals. Okay? But then you have on, on the first page, now that's vacation rental is where the section of the legals. But then you have with council says hearing for landmark development, it would create two families, single family and short-term rental properties and build a community in the South End, the mayor said. Well, which one is, are any of these houses that they're talking about rentals, is that on this list?
I don't, I don't know what list you have.
Well, it's out of paper. Everybody got, you, you get the emails, you, you got more electronics than I do. This is the same paper.
So the paper, here's the list for the public hearing today. So I don't, I can't see your list. So if you could kind of...
Okay, no problem. Yeah. I don't give a fuck. I will. So my point is you made a statement that that's what it's going to be, but you never listed the properties that that's going to fall under.
Well, and the properties were listed in another section of the Gazette.
So it's confusing, correct? So some, so which one of those is going to be for a single-family ownership? Thank you. Which one is going to be for the single family out of that list?
So if you look in the Gazette on October 1st, 4th, and 5th, I believe it was, it has a list of all the properties that we're talking about in this Restore New York grant. Okay? I will go through each property with you after the meeting, but I'd like to have you finish up in your comments so we can move on.
Well, you know what? When you're doing agenda items, is there a time limit? Is it, what is the time? Five, two? Okay. But my point being is very confusing, is very deceitful, and which ones are you talking about? Because I'm sure everybody'd be interested in knowing. And stop selling off our property. People would love to have those homes. People would love to raise their families, but you know, all this investment, oh, you know, pineapple, we, we turned it into...
Okay, I'm going to... Thank you for your comments. We're going to move on to the next. And I'm, I'm open to talk to you after the meeting.
You know what? I don't do Facebook and all that, but you know what? I think I need to hire somebody to do that and maybe I need to get some followers and show them the paperwork that I have gotten out the clerk's office from the city of Niagara Falls, you know?
Okay. So, next speaker, please.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Gloria Dodson or Delson, correct?
Gloria Dodson.
Okay. Ms. Delson, you wrote on the wrong one. Which one would you like to be on?
Good of the Community.
Gloria will go to Good of the Community. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Alithia Mills. Okay. And that would be all.
Okay.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Done.
Would you like to be on the Good of the Community as well? Ms. Mills?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
From the council, any comments on the grant?
As far as the, I'd like to know how much money is in the pot for the grant and what is the process of selecting which homes to be revitalized within the city? Because I know we're talking about the South End, but is there room for other portions of the city because it's a lot of neglect and a lot of blight throughout the whole city?
So here's, here's what I'm going to discuss about, about this proposal and this public hearing is we had 12 vacant and abandoned properties and the Restore New York grant was available for developer to come in, make a proposal to the city. So we are taking 12 properties that were abandoned, neglected, and we are going to have a developer put them back on the tax roll. And like I said, I'm not going to go through every address, but there are some are going to be for vacation rentals, some are for single-family rentals, some are for multiple family rentals. But getting these properties up on the tax roll is an excellent thing for the city of Niagara Falls. And what I think what's happening with some people here, I'm not sure they understood what the Restore New York grant was. And I think it's important to go home and, and look it up and you can find out what the initiative in Restore New York. And really it's, it's, we're using it for exactly what it was supposed to be used for, you know, so.
I guess the question that I'm asking is, is, is there a process of picking which homes in the city? You kind of get what I'm saying?
Yeah, so developer and...
So it's the developer. So whoever chooses to file for the grant, they come in and they can pick out...
They could look at city-owned property and say, jeez, this city-owned property is sitting vacant. We would like to these, make a proposal to the city and we would like to use the Restore New York grant to develop these properties that were sitting doing nothing. So that's all I have. Any council members, any other comments? Okay, the public hearing is closed. What we're going to do is we're going to, I'm going to make a motion to adjust the agenda a little. We have a special guest in the audience and I would like to make a motion to move item number 24 up to before our presentations. Call or roll?
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes. So what we'll do is I'm going to call on the mayor. Restaino will come up and we're going to have Marcia McWilson come up and we want to do...
Whereas Niagara Falls owner Marcia McWilson is truly a woman, a woman of many gifts and talents. Whereas as the youngest of 12 children, Marcia began singing at six years old as a member of St. John's A M E Church Choir. Her exposure to gospel music helped shape her style, which eventually transformed into the inspirational blues genre she currently performs today. Whereas as a former radio host on the legendary W U F O, Marcia made a name for herself as an accomplished gospel and blues singer, performing with the names such as David and Tamela Mann, Yolanda Adams, Kim Burrell, Donnie McClurkin. She's appeared on television, on Tyler Perry's If Loving You Is Wrong. Whereas notwithstanding her popularity as an entertainer, Marcia McWilson has continued to uphold her faith through music, appearing on the Bobby Jones Gospel Show and leading a gospel choir down the runway at Fashion Week in Toronto, Ontario. She is also currently evangelist at Zion Dominion Global Ministries. Whereas along with singing and performing with a variety of celebrities, Marcia has received accolades for her contributions to music as well as her community. In 2002, she was awarded the humanitarian award from the city of Niagara Falls and was also the first black woman artist to be inducted into the Niagara Falls Music Hall. Marcia is also known as a businesswoman. She successfully opened her own salon called McWilson's House of Beauty after graduating from the Marjan School of Beauty in 1994. She's accomplished all of this and more despite tragedies in her life. Marcia has persevered and through her faith in God has overcome the barriers holding her back. The city of Niagara Falls is proud to honor its daughter Marcia McWilson, wife, mother, certified minority business owner, recording artist, television actress, motivational speaker, and so much more. And we are blessed to know her and truly appreciate her. Before I finish with today's resolution, I also want to read, Marcia McWilson has been an independent entrepreneur in our city for nearly three decades. She has performed across the country and has brought acclaim to our city with her talent. Her positive contributions and distinctive talent have earned her recognition and acclaim across our region and around our country. The city of Niagara Falls congratulates Marcia McWilson on, on all of her accomplishments and wish her well in all of her future endeavors. Today, I am honored to recognize Marcia McWilson as the Blues Queen of Niagara Falls. Just one minute. While you're still standing, while you're still standing, I also want you to know that now therefore being resolved that the Niagara Falls City Council and I and you and Robert Restaino wish to honor Marcia McWilson in recognition of her light, talent, dedication, and commitment to our city and the community enlarged by design in today, October 5th, 2022, as Marcia McWilson... I asked Marcia to sing the National Anthem for us and she didn't want to do that. She wanted to favor you with just a small portion of one of her favorite songs. I was born by a river in a little town, just like that river, I've been running here this way. It's been a long, a long time coming, but I know a change is going to come. All right. All right.
Let's go down. Let's go down. Marcia, we all want to congratulate you. We're going to come...
One of my musicians, y'all. Hey, this is one of my backup girls, too.
I'm no backup guy. Congratulations. I wish we had had such a happy agenda, we could have had to sing all day.
Oh, look at this. Get a picture, maybe, I'll hit him. Give me a picture. Me and Andy. I like Terry's second. I've heard of the performance. Yeah, you should have went to the concert for that.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to do that in advance of the business of
today's meeting. If you're prepared to run the agenda...
Mayor, we have, we have two presentations first.
Sure. Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
And Mayor, we were glad to do something like that. And I think we have a long meeting, but I'm going to guarantee you that was the highlight of the meeting. So...
Everyone in Marcia's party, have a good dinner. We'll be down, we'll be down there later.
I'll come and sing for you anytime. Mayor, you kill for me. I love you. Okay, as the fan club for Marcia leaves, you know, we will get set up for our first
presentation, which is going to be from John Percy, Destination Niagara's president and CEO. And John, you can take your time for a second. Let them...
How do you follow that? What a wonderful woman. How wonderful to be in her presence. Congratulations.
Wonderful to have her energy and her presence, and I look forward to someday hearing her sing and hopefully soon. It's wonderful, like the mayor said, to have a star in our presence. Thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to be before you this evening. Councilman and Chairperson Spanbauer, fellow council members, mayor, and staff, thank you for this opportunity. I will try to be brief because I know your meeting is long, but we try to come before you now that we are somewhat past COVID, is to present some data and where we are year to date for 2022 and even some past numbers that we just received for 2021. On the first slide, thank you, Dan, for your help in moving that along, but June, July, and August were all increases over June of 2021. This was great news because 2021, and I'll show you in a little bit later, was better than we ever anticipated. So to see these increases in occupancy, average daily rate is the rate that our hoteliers are receiving. Those all had increases over 2021.
Marsha, we all want to congratulate you. We're gonna come."
One of my musicians, y'all. Hey, this is one of my backup girls, too.
I'm no backup guy. Congratulations. Wish we'd ended up such a happy agenda. We could have had to sing all day.
Oh, look at this! Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to do that in advance of the business of today's meeting. If you're prepared to run the agenda.
Mayor, we have two presentations first. And Mayor, we were glad to do something like that. I think we have a long meeting, but I'm gonna guarantee you that was the highlight of the meeting, so. Everyone in Marsha's party, have a good dinner. We'll be down there later. Okay, as the fan club for Marsha leaves, you know, we will get set up for our first presentation, which is gonna be from John Percy, Destination Niagara's president and CEO. And John, you can take your time for a second.
How do you follow that? What a wonderful woman. How wonderful to be in her presence. Congratulations.
Wonderful to have her energy and her presence, and I look forward to someday hearing her sing and hopefully soon. It's wonderful, like the mayor said, to have a star in our presence. Thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to be before you this evening. Councilman and Chairperson Spanbauer, fellow council members, mayor, and staff, thank you for this opportunity. I will try to be brief because I know your meeting is long, but we try to come before you now that we are somewhat past COVID is to present some data and where we are year-to-date for two thousand and twenty-two and even some past numbers that we just received for two thousand and twenty-one. On the first slide, thank you, Dan, for your help in moving that along, but June, July, and August were all increases over June of two thousand and twenty-one. This was great news because two thousand and twenty-one, and I'll show you in a little bit later, was better than we ever anticipated. So to see these increases in occupancy, average daily rate is the rate that our hoteliers are receiving. Those all had increases over two thousand and twenty-one. And rev- revenue per available room is what each owner is receiving as revenue per available room that they rent out on a nightly basis. Again, increases across the board. The next slide, year-to-date occupancy is fifty-four point four percent, a nine point seven percent increase over two thousand and twenty-one. The average daily rate, one hundred and forty-six dollars, a six point nine percent increase. And our occupancy was well above the national average in July and in August. The national average fell below our average, which I was pleased to see. The next slide is the regional growth. This is what I meant earlier. We did receive economic numbers for two thousand and twenty-one from Tourism Economics. New York State supplies us with numbers for every county across New York State. We were up nine point three percent relative to two thousand and nineteen. I anticipated two thousand and twenty-one to be anywhere between sixty to seventy percent of two thousand and nineteen. To see these numbers come through at nine point three percent increase, we were ecstatic. As you see, in two thousand and nineteen, there was seven hundred and sixty-one million dollars in spending across Niagara County and tourism, dropped to four hundred and seventy-five million in two thousand and twenty. Two thousand and twenty, we were sixty percent of two thousand and nineteen, which was a joy to see. And two thousand and twenty-one, eight hundred and thirty-one million dollars, again a nine point three percent increase. Ninety-two percent relative to two thousand and nineteen of state taxes, but local taxes up ten percent at fifty-two million dollars in local taxes brought in by tourism. Everyone should know that they also in this study, and I have this full report if anybody wants it, from Tourism Economics. It's a division of Oxford Economics, one of the most reputable data collection firms in the world. But Tourism Economics is their tourism division, and they collect tourism data for states, countries, cities, all over the world. And so their data is very, very reputable. The next slide is tourism-generated labor income. We are thirteen point two percent of the total labor income in the county is tourism-related. We also are twenty-one percent of the total workforce. Every one out of every five individuals is employed in the hospitality or tourism sector in Niagara County and primarily in Niagara Falls. The next slide, as many of you know, we have not been before you since we took over the convention center, was formerly the Conference and Event Center of Niagara Falls. The state came to myself and our agency in fall of two thousand and twenty. The contract was coming up in December of two thousand and twenty-one with Spectrum Management out of Philadelphia and wanted to keep it local and asked if we had interests. We did review it, hired a consultant, and felt it was made a lot of sense, a lot of positive upside for us to manage that building. So as of January first, we are now managing the now Niagara Falls USA Convention Center. We have returned the name of Convention Center. We did our research and talked to meeting planners all over the country. Conference Center denotes an older or smaller and/or smaller building. So we went back to the proper term of Convention Center, and it matches our branding, which we did in two thousand and seventeen, but the Niagara Falls USA Convention Center. We also manage Old Fall Street, and thank you to the mayor and this administration for having that MOU with the state. And we now manage that block area from Third Street to the State Park on Old Fall Street with programming, cleaning, et cetera. So very pleased to have that MOU between the city and the state so that we can manage it. Our next slide showcases Be a Bucket List Hero. Since we took over this building, we did receive a CFA grant through New York State. We did it last year in anticipation of taking over the building and received two hundred thousand dollars to kick off our first-ever major campaign, targeting meeting planners all over the country with the campaign Be a Bucket List Hero. By bringing your attendees here, you can check off their bucket list, and they can have both a business trip as well as a pleasure trip to Niagara Falls, USA. And this campaign is in full force and having great success with it. Our next slide is our spring campaign. We do campaigns year-round, but the spring campaign was in full force March sixteenth through June fifteenth called Explore and Soar. This showcases the wonderful attributes of the falls, but many of the wonderful attractions that we have the pleasure of marketing and selling around the world, and you'll see this. And we targeted an eight-hour drive market with all of our digital advertising in the springtime during that campaign. Our results on the next slide show total impressions of over thirty-nine million people with total click-throughs of four hundred and fifty-three thousand, well over the national average for total clicks going into our advertising and into our website. Next slide is our summer campaign that kicked off June twenty-second and August thirty-first. We used to scale back on advertising in the summer, but in summer of two thousand and twenty, we beefed up advertising and have continued summer campaigns ever since and been very successful. This was a six-hour drive market. Since gas prices were rising in spring and summer, we decided to pull in from eight hours on the spring campaign to a six-hour drive market for the summer campaign. Here, as you see, Have Your Best Summer Ever was the campaign that we put out for the summer campaign. The next slide are the summer campaign results with total impressions of forty-nine million, total click-throughs of three hundred and forty-three thousand. This also had a connected TV video completion component where if you were watching Hulu or any of those streaming devices and you don't pay to get rid of commercials, those commercials contain us, some of them, and these were completions of six hundred and seventy-seven thousand people saw our commercials through many of those streaming devices, so we are very pleased with that. We're very excited. The mayor and I have talked about this. He has seen this campaign in our boardroom. But the next slide shows the other side of New York. This is also a CFA grant that we've received for a quarter of a million dollars. We are now in New York City, our largest inbound market, both domestically and internationally as a gateway. And this is a campaign that shows us tied into New York City with the Statue of Liberty, the Chrysler Building, Brooklyn Bridge, and Radio City Music Hall. This will have many components to it. We are even wrapping Uber cars in New York City. These campaigns are all on bus shelters. There's a hundred and fifty bus shelters throughout New York City and the Five Boroughs in Manhattan. So we're very excited, and we will be supplying this wonderful building with some of these posters as well as upon the mayor's request and kick that off next winter slash spring, and we'll do a presentation here with some of those posters. We're very excited about that campaign. The next slide is a grant application. New York State received through the American, Federal American Rescue Plan Act, was money through the Economic Development Agency of the federal government. They supplied each state with tourism recovery dollars. Fourteen million of the forty-four million is being allocated to destination marketing organizations, of which we are the official destination marketing organization for Niagara Falls, USA. We have put forth a two-point-six-million-dollar state grant application that will go continue to promote our new, newly reintroduced Niagara Falls Convention Center, international travel that we hope to come back. We're already starting to see it come back, but we want to come back strong in promoting our international travel, promoting outdoor recreation through kayaking, birding. I was speaking to some of the people here in the audience, but birding is becoming quite a huge audience and a very devoted and dedicated audience, and disc golf. I didn't even know what the heck disc golf was. And we have two to three locations in Niagara County that are number-one locations, and kayaking is also becoming very prevalent in the outdoor market. We've also asking for nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars through this to afford that portion alone, but again, in total, two-point-six million dollars. Also in your packet is a cheat sheet, if you will, of all the numbers that I spoke of, eight hundred and thirty-one million dollars in tourism spending, again, nine point three percent increase over two thousand and nineteen. Again, almost fourteen thousand employees in this county, directly and indirectly. Directly meaning they work in a hotel or in a restaurant or an attraction. Indirectly are purveyors that supply maybe spirits to our locations or handle the laundry for a hotel, et cetera. But almost fourteen thousand people are employed in this county. Our website visitation is well over two million people now from a million from just five or six years ago. And total economic impact for conventions and meetings as well as groups for motor coach is on your sheet for two thousand and twenty-one. We anticipate seeing the hotel numbers that I presented earlier to far exceed even this eight hundred and thirty-one million for two thousand and twenty-one, and we have fared better than most destinations around this country. Many are still trying to recover and well below, even Buffalo are well below their two thousand and nineteen numbers, and we have surpassed two thousand and nineteen numbers already. So I couldn't be more ecstatic. It is my honor, along with a wonderful team member, Sarah, as well as a great team that I have the honor and pleasure to manage every day, and it is great to be your ambassador for Niagara Falls, USA around the world because it is true honor to represent this destination and sell it and build up. We have increased tourism spending since two thousand and ten by eighty-four percent, removing two thousand and twenty, of course, from that number. But from two thousand and ten to now, that started at four hundred and fifty-one million dollars to now eight hundred and thirty-one million dollars in tourism spending, we've increased that number over a ten-year period by eighty-four percent. If there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain. Thank you for your support. The mayor sits on our board on a monthly basis. You have a permanent seat through our contractual obligation to all of you on this body and to this wonderful city. And so it's a pleasure to have the mayor with us on a monthly basis, but I'm always there, an open door to answer any questions you may have this evening or at any time. So thank you.
I have not seen the final numbers, Chairperson, so I can't answer your question.
I'll reach out to that. Second question, as a tourism expert, with the border being open, we show some great numbers there. With the border being open, what's your prediction in the future with those numbers?
It's hard to project, Chairperson, but I'll tell you one thing, and I said this to many media outlets during COVID, that the border being closed was a double-edged sword. On the positive side, it helped us, being by the border being closed. People couldn't cross the border, but they could still come to see the falls. The positive of that is that we've been able to change the mindset of many tour operators that bring motor coach groups, board groups to the area. And we've been able to, there's a wonderful dear friend of mine in New York City, Lisa Canadrell, I'll use her as an example with American Tours International. She would give me the time of day to take her business to Canada for many years. She has now moved all of her business to the US side, and she said she will not return. So that makes me so happy, and we've had many other calls, and I told my staff, get to everybody, be in their face. We were calling them, not to get their business, but just to keep in touch with them. How are you doing? And that started in March of two thousand and twenty. We've stayed in constant contact, and it has helped. Now, the other side, the negative side of that sword is the border being closed because we do love our Canadians that come over to shop and frequent our restaurants and stay in our hotels, et cetera. So it is a double-edged sword, but you are going to see, Chairperson, I've said this to all my colleagues that I talk to frequently across the country, is you're gonna start to see a normal return to market segmentation. So for domestic customers, we're gonna lose that. For the longest time, they couldn't travel internationally. Now people are getting on planes and going abroad again. Seventy-seven million people in our country travel abroad. For three years, or two years, they could not. So we tapped into that audience wherever we could. So we're gonna lose that, and you're gonna see, but you're gonna have the return of international coming back to us. So you're gonna start to see that normal return to market segmentation. So I think we'll fill in. We may lose domestic customers to Canada, but we'll be able to fill in with international, with groups, and convention and meetings. I spoke to my staff now at the Convention Center. First quarter, that's always been a difficult. We hardly have any dates open in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-three, and that makes me ecstatic. And I know if you've been by the buildings, but we have signage going up all over the building. It has not had adequate signage or good signage. We have new signage going up on the building, and I'm more than pleased with the rebranding of that building and the future of that building and our future prospects for that business. So sorry, long-winded answer for Canada.
No, thank you. It's interesting. It's gonna be interesting to see the future of that.
Yeah, it is. It's gonna be very, and that worries me because we've done so well, you know, that normal, you know, we may have a flux a little bit through this period of going back to more normalization of people traveling as we move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could, while Mr. Percy's with us, three things I'd like to comment on. First is that I remember in those early days of the pandemic, the staff under the direction of Mr. Percy began to think about retooling who we advertised to. And so we were quickly shifting our approach to Great Lakes, Mid-Atlantic, Eastern Seaboard. People drive traffic, and that's worked well for us. It turned into quite a steady stream of visitors. Second, and this was something that John would repeat over and over again as we went into the dog days of the pandemic. Much like after the tragedy of September eleventh, our destination was among those that was able to bounce back quicker. It's an outdoor place. There was a desire to be there. So too, with this virus, we became a choice for so many because it was outdoor. So when John talks about our ability to bounce back faster, I think that's a function of who we are and how we market ourselves. The last thing I want to bring to your attention is that Mr. Percy mentioned how twenty-one percent, that's one in five people, one in five, work in our tourist economy. That is the reason why we have to make this tourist economy a full-time job. With one in five people working in there and with many folks trying to make ends meet while working in some of those service jobs in the tourism industry, it's incumbent upon us to do everything we can to expand that season, make those jobs full-time. These families can then purchase the homes they want and live the dream that they're looking for. Not everybody's going to college. Not everybody's gonna be a tradesperson. So we need to continue to lean on our group at Destination Niagara, but we too have to focus on how to expand that. So those are some of the initiatives that you hear me talking about in this, and I appreciate your support of all of them. And I also appreciate Destination Niagara always being a good partner.
Thank you, Mayor, and it was a pleasure to speak to the mayor every week, whenever we got a chance to give him an update because we were concerned. I'll tell you, tourism fell to our knees. It was the hardest-hit industry. We lost fifty-six percent of our working, of the industry, the workers, fifty-six percent. The largest percentage of unemployment was from the hospitality and tourism sector. It is bouncing back, but the whole world has changed, and so has that, and the mayor is correct. With one in five, today I met with Bonnie Rice from Niagara County Workforce Development Agency and Bridget Nylund from Niagara University. The mayor will be there. I'm going to be hosting a lunch in November in my office to bring Mark Laurie, Niagara University, the Workforce Development Committee, because we have to play an active role in this and how do we build this. And what we have done, a poor job in our industry, is not branding how good the jobs really are. People feel that the jobs are frontline. Yes, frontline is a great starting point, but you can move up quickly in our industry. Tracy knows this. It's a great industry. It provides a wonderful career opportunities, and we have to brand that better and teach. I'm part of a national initiative with U.S. Travel Association that we need to do a better branding job and show the growth in the career opportunities so that people quit thinking that we're just entry-level only, that you only work at a front desk of a hotel, and that's wonderful, too. But we do need to change the image of our industry so that people can make it a great career. And it's one of the best careers you could ever have. I'm testament to that, so is my staff and many others. And so love, love, love this career, and it gives you great opportunities. So I look forward to working with all of you on that so we can build this industry even bigger here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? My pleasure to be with all of you. Thank you for your time. I know I ate up more than I should have.
Good information. We have another presentation from Niagara Military Affairs Council.
Obviously, like the agenda says, I am not Hollywood. But Mayor Estino, Administrator Estino, council members, thank you very much. On the left side of the folder that you have will be the same as the PowerPoint slides that we have on the screens. So my name is Joel Delloise, and on behalf of the Niagara Military Affairs Council, I'd like to thank you for providing this opportunity to present on the Niagara Falls Air Reserve Station, the largest employer in Niagara County, the largest federal facility in our region, and the last existing U.S. Air Force base in the state of New York. Today, we will look at our work as an organization from the perspective of the past, the present, and the future. Slide, please. We work for the growth and prosperity of the space and those who work and serve here, and also for a positive economic impact for our community. NYMAC is always working, five years. years in the future. Much of the time, as we advocate for the space, we are working for economic development in our community. Our community, small businesses, contractors, and laborers of all kinds benefit from our efforts. It's important that our political leaders understand this, and it's imperative that we are part of the economic strategy of our community and our county. To be fair, NYMAC cannot take full credit for these efforts if we have, as we have depended upon and accepted our community's and our community leaders' support. But we have led this effort for more than twenty-five years through base realignment and closure actions, known by its acronym BRAC, that ugly four-letter word that we don't like to say. But billions of dollars of accumulated annual economic impact since 1995 or 2005 simply would not have taken place. So as base leadership changes from time to time, NYMAC is the continuity over time that the base leadership depends on. The relationships that we have with our federal delegation, Senators Schumer and Gillibrand and Congressman Higgins and Jacobs are also important to what we do. It's important to note that we are hatch-act compliant, and we stay out of the political fray. It is necessary that we remain so and remain an independent organization so that when we sit down at, with leadership at the installation, they know that we are not political in any way, because the base cannot tell a community what they can do, they being the community. We cannot, the base cannot impose their will or their wishes on the community at all. Slide, please. So what does NYMAC do? There are three things that I want you to remember about NYMAC today. We advocate for the Niagara Falls Air Reserve Station. We work as a liaison facilitating communication and keeping those lines of communication open, and we strategize on behalf of the installation and the units here. Slide, please. Remembering the past. To be successful, we need to reflect on our history and remember our past experiences. In my opinion, when we were added by the 1995 BRAC Commission to be reviewed, it was valuable to our community as it woke us up to what we have here. 2005 was much more serious, as we found both wings on the initial closure list that would have totally closed the installation. In 2012, the new 2013 military budget did not include the 107th, and that threatened eight hundred and fifty jobs at the base. So working with our state and federal delegations, we were awarded a remotely piloted aircraft mission for the 107th, more commonly but inaccurately referred to as drones. And this was the long-term enduring mission that we were looking for. So now they are known as the 107th Attack Wing. That same year, the Air Force released their Force Structure Document concerning the future of the Air Force, and it included the retiring of sixty-five C-130 aircraft from the Air Force fleet. We saw this as a serious threat to the future of the 914th airlift wing at our base. This is where our mission to strategize comes in. The NYMAC Strategic Committee saw aerial refueling as the future. We again worked with our state and federal delegations as information brokers, that's what we consider ourselves to be, information brokers, informing them of the existing infrastructure to support the refueling mission. We worked with our consultant and our major commands within the Air Force, the Air Mobility Command, the Air Combat Command, and the 2017 military budget released in 2016 included twenty-five million dollars for a 914th mission change. Again, that's a great success that we are very proud of. So remembering the past being crucial to our future. Slide, please. The present. Businesses here in Niagara County and in our region depend on this base. Businesses and communities directly benefit from the dollars spent by those who work and serve here. It is no exaggeration to say that the new Niagara Falls International Airport Terminal would not have been built had our efforts been unsuccessful. Calspan, the premier independent provider of testing, technology, and development services and systems in the aerospace and defense industries, would also not be at Niagara. Slide, please. It is important to note that many of the men and women currently assigned and work here are our friends, family, coworkers, and neighbors, and they only have the opportunity to serve at Niagara because of the community backing of NYMAC over these twenty-five-plus years. Many great military careers started at the base because community members had the opportunity to serve their country close to home. Reservists and guardsmen are volunteers. They miss time with family and friends and putting themselves in harm's way to represent and defend us. Our local service members have been asked to serve all over the globe. In this year alone, we have witnessed the deployment of individuals to Alaska, to Africa, to the Middle East, to Europe, and in Europe to include Poland. So when I say Poland, you kind of get an idea of the ramifications of what that includes in that region of the world. Slide, please. Annual Economic Impact. NFARs has a very large annual economic impact on the Western New York community. We have three thousand employees, and they depend on a one-hundred-million-dollar annual payroll. And our business community depends on two-hundred-million dollars of operating expenses, equaling, equaling a more than three-hundred-million-dollar annual economic impact to the region. And these figures only account for those directly employed on the installation, those members of the 914th and 107th and the associated civilian support positions. Additional dollars, though, are spent on contractors and jobs spurred on by base activity. Slide, please. Federal Investment in Niagara. In the past five years alone, over three hundred million dollars has been invested in the base to stand up the two new enduring missions of the 914th and the 107th. Now, mind you, these are federal dollars invested in Western New York. The projects listed on the slide are an example of just some of the projects NYMAC has been involved in and shows the importance of NYMAC's advocacy efforts. Slide, please. Of great importance in our continual advocacy is our work as liaisons and information brokers, sitting down with leadership here and finding out the needs, working along with various levels of the Air Force, such as the Air Force Reserve Command, Air Mobility Command, Air Combat Command, National Guard Bureau, and then also, of course, our federal delegation. Military leadership legally cannot advocate in the same way a military affairs organization can. The military cannot lobby politicians on their own behalf. We also work with the, our state of New York's consultant in DC to move things along in our nation's capital. Slide, please. Our work not only happens within the Air Force, but we keep a continuous dialogue within our community. The biggest threat to an Air Force base is encroachment. We appreciate the towns and the city that surround the base, that passed ordinances to work closer with the base on development to protect the installation. Through regular meetings and curated opportunities, we work to educate and inform our leaders about the military and our military about our community. Our most recent activities related to encroachment include the development of a compatible use plan, which will provide an opportunity for communities around the base to receive additional federal dollars for infrastructure projects. In other words, what infrastructure and resources does the base consume that could potentially impact the surrounding communities? We work to continue having meetings to keep these discussions open with the surrounding communities. Slide, please. Relationships. It's, it's all about the relationships. It's imperative that we continue to visit our nation's capital, the Pentagon, the major commands, and the numbered air forces that our wings report to as we advocate. It is important to note that the last couple of years, the leadership in all these organizations has changed even during COVID. But relationships cannot be built through virtual meetings alone. When possible, these past two years, our volunteers attended conferences in person to advocate for the base, such as a trip that I was a part of a group last week. We went to DC to conference with our senators and our local congressional delegation. We need to build, strengthen, and maintain our relationships, so we will attend these in-person events whenever possible. Slide, please. The Future. Last year, when we came to you, we said we did not remember a busier summer for NYMAC for some time, and this year I have to repeat this statement. NYMAC's subject matter expert volunteers have been working continually to advocate for the base and the community. We greatly appreciate the town and our city's participation in meetings that we believe will bring projects that will positively affect our base for many years to come. And Mayor Estino, I want to thank you for coming to our groundbreaking ceremony yesterday for the new Lockport Road main gate. So as we strategize and advocate, what is the future for the base? Most importantly, the runway, because that's what we do best. Six million dollars in design funding and support for the Air Force Reserve Command was approved in Congress. We appreciate our Senators Schumer and Gillibrand and our Congressman Higgins and Jacobs for support on this, on this initiative, which is expected to become a fifty-four-million-dollar runway enhancement in the near future. When our Strategic Committee pushed in the direction of the tanker mission, we knew that it was a needed asset in the Air Force and another one of those enduring missions with the opportunity for growth. It's the same with the RPA or the remotely piloted aircraft mission. It's an enduring mission with opportunity for growth. Refueling. Aerial refueling is a force multiplier. The thirst for jet fuel is unquenchable, as you can imagine. The RPA mission brought a vast communication and infrastructure improvement to the base. This infrastructure enhances Niagara and brings opportunities, such as the addition of our latest ongoing long-term project, a multi-agency secure facility in cooperation with the Air Force Research Lab and UB, and possibly local defense contractors. Again, we have much pride in what we have accomplished, so many thanks to our city of Niagara Falls and to Niagara County and the other local municipalities and UB and defense industry partners on making sure these projects move forward. So we like to say that we think the future looks bright. Slide, please. So why support NYMAC? I don't believe there is another volunteer organization anywhere like this in New York State that has the economic impact like we do for such a low cost. We have a low one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar annual budget, which did drop to forty-five-thousand as we reacted to COVID. Our Volunteer Board of Directors brings tremendous expertise. The board is comprised of one-third business community, one-third former military, and one-third government. This gives us expertise at the table in all those areas. The relationship that we have with New York State's military consultant in DC is of utmost importance, especially as he helps us work on these projects. He is our DC on the ground, eyes and ears, so to speak. My message to local and state government is that we are worth the investment. We need your financial support. Pure and simple. And we have no fancy offices, no big salaries, just the expertise of our dedicated volunteers that realize the value of the base and its importance to our community. Slide, please. So as you can see, here are the municipalities that do support us, and we really do appreciate those who support us financially. It keeps us going in our efforts to keep the base alive and thriving. It's truly a labor, a labor of love for us in our community to support the base. Slide. And that's it. What are your questions on that note? Unfortunately, Mr. Tompkins, Erie County, for the percentage of service members that they have, they don't seem to want to be a playing part of the team.
Because I know a lot of people do live on Grand Island.
Oh, definitely. Oh, yeah. Yeah. The Grand Island town government, they, like I say, they just haven't up until now. You know, we hope it changes in the future, but they haven't chosen to be a, an active part of the NYMAC process up until now.
Mr. Chairman, let me just say, Mr. Delloise mentioned the groundbreaking, groundbreaking main gate plaza. While we can never stop and vigilance, I couldn't help but be impressed by the fact that this money had been allocated for the improvements of that plaza. And again, while we can't, we all need to remain vigilant because you never know when, when the ground would shift, the fact that the federal government continues to invest in the Niagara Falls Air Reserve Station, I think bodes well for all of us. And I need to remember the importance of that employer, not just to our community, but to the other businesses that it supports. And so whenever we can, I, I would humbly submit to you that it's important for us to provide whatever support we can through NYMAC.
Thank you. And I have to say, and I remember in 2005, when there was some talk about the base closing, I didn't follow politics back then, but I think you presenting and seeing the general public see the impact of what your organization can do for this community is very important.
So if we ever hear about the Niagara Force, Air Force Base being up for a closure, we need to rally behind your organization and support what you, what you need. So I appreciate who you've brought forward.
We appreciate that as well. I had the dual perspective of also working on the civilian side of the airport. And if it wasn't for that terminal, you know, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have had, in the case of Spirit Airlines, but now also still having Allegiant and the draw of the Canadians. You know, when we slide that passport through that meter on the keyboard in the terminal, I mean, they're in the American travel system. They travel like you and I would domestically. So, and then the other thing about the Lockport Road Gate, anybody who ever had any really serious ill-will intentions that had big enough resources, if you know what I mean, it's a clear shot through that gate all the way to the runway and detonate whatever they wanted to. So that's, that's really the impetus for, for what we're doing right now at the gate.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to our public speaker. So if the presenters feel free to walk out, because this is going to be a fairly long meeting. You're not going to insult anyone. Before we move to public speakers, just like I always do, I just want to read some of the rules for public speaking. If speaking about an agenda item, please refer to the agenda item that you were speaking of before your five minutes starts. Speaking of the five minutes, I want to make sure I tell, I had three people approach me and ask if they could speak longer than five minutes at this meeting. As a discretion I have as chair, I said, no, I want to keep it fair, and I think five minutes is long enough to get your point across. You can always speak to us separately if you need to speak to us. Speakers are addressing the city council as a body. If you would like to address an individual council member or anyone else, please do that separately. Please remain, remain focused on the agenda item you're signed up for or for the good of the community. The council will not respond to questions or statements during the meeting. This is an opportunity for you to share your ideas. And finally, all persons in attendance at any council meeting proceeding, either as a recognized speaker or not, are required to show proper decorum at all times during the proceedings and shall refrain from any contact, disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the meeting. If you engage in any activity that would violate those things, we may ask you to leave. So first public speaker, please.
First public speaker is Jacqueline Prior. As your cross podium, please identify your agenda number. Thank you.
Hi, Jacqueline Prior. Is this good for the community or agenda items?
Agenda items.
I thought we did that already.
No, what that was, and I think you got confused, that was the public hearing we had. So right now, it's speaking on a specific agenda item. So if you were going to speak for the good of the community, we will call you up later.
Oh, so we can go back to what I was speaking about then, if that was the meeting.
Just state the number of agenda item you're going to speak on. What number?
I got me confused. I couldn't really.
And Jacqueline, if you're not sure, what you can do is you can speak for the good of the community portion.
Um, well, no, let's go for the agenda item as far as the property.
Okay, you have to speak to what agenda item. I'm going to keep you on that item, focused on that item.
I have to go back to Jacqueline.
Okay, can you add her to the good of the community speakers?
No, I'm already on that list. You said agenda items. This is what we're talking about now, right?
Right, but it doesn't seem you're prepared to speak.
Well, because I thought we had already did that, but that was a public speaking. So you're telling me this was our only time to come and speak as a public? And then going to turn around and we're going to have a vote on it?
So Jackie, you can speak on an agenda item. Just say the number you're going to speak on and speak on it. Start the time, please.
I'm not going to waste everybody's time because everybody wants to speak, but like I said.
Can we process? Please state your agenda item as your cross podium.
I'd like to speak on all the agenda items, but I understand I don't have enough time to actually do that. So I'm going to speak on just a few. And again, as I had approached the forum previously, I'm going to address the agenda items concerning the sale of $5,000 for each of these properties.
Henry, can you mention the agenda item you're going to speak on as you go through it?
Okay, I'll try to look it up. Kind of hard to see. Okay, well, thank you very much. Yes, in regards to the sale of $5,000 for each of these properties and all that, I want to state again that I feel very strongly that this is not fair to the public and the citizens in Niagara Falls, because they have no say. And I'm appalled that so many things are hidden from the public. There's a lot of sale of property in Niagara Falls, and we don't know where this money's going to. If it's going into the general coffers or if it's going into a special pet project proposed by anybody in this government. And I object to these select divisions of information coming into the public grasp. Okay? In regards to the sale of all these properties, I don't think I was adequately notified about this. I might have offered $6,000 for one of these properties or houses. You know, was the surrounding neighborhood interviewed, told them that this is up for bid through this special grant program? I don't think so. That was not done. Okay? If you're a citizen and a house is going to be torn down and they're going to build a hotel or some kind of rest place or motel or bread and breakfast or whatever you want to call it, don't they have a right to be informed that, first of all, the property is for sale? And that a proposal is made for this company? What if they have a garden outside and it's going to be obstructed from this big building? You see, that's what my contention is, is that the public is not aware of everything. And I was told that numerous times, just go to the website. I've done that over and over again. And I was also told that everything has to be done with three days' notice on all these agenda items. I've gone to the details on agenda items, and it's a blank page. There's no details. Why is it so secret from the public? You know? This concerns all of us in Niagara Falls. We ought to be able to use the internet, Niagara Falls Gazette, to access all this information concerning all of us, and it should very easily be done. You know, be put on an email list, something, so you can check it every day. Okay? Addressing these agenda items, they don't have enough details. Lots of this stuff is being sold, property and acquisitions of things. There's a tremendous amount of revenue being spent by our local government for select items. Who are these select items going to? Certain private enterprises? How come we don't have a say in that? It affects us all, affects the budget, and it affects how much we pay for taxes. I guess I'm out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Hamilton, item number 27, 28, and 29.
And as Mr. Hamilton makes his way up here, I just want to make sure people understand the agenda's put out five business days before this meeting. I know the general public only has five minutes to speak, but please contact any of your council members if you have questions about the agenda items. You shouldn't come up here and not know the questions that you can be answered beforehand. So please use us as a resource when the agenda comes out.
Ken Hamilton, 1719 100th Street in LaSalle. The common citizen pays taxes and should be able to address the city council. Landlords pay taxes, so they should be able to address the city council as well. But landlords pay a fee in order for the city council to be able to contact them. And that has been abrogated. You're right, chairperson, that the agenda is placed online at the time that it is. I know it is because I'm the one that had the city do those types of things. I'm also the one who was here who was fighting for the landlords when it was decided that they would have to pay a fee for registration. And that fee was in part to stay in communications with the city in case the city had to address them of any issues that were upcoming. Spellerade Hare said that there should be an email exchange between the city council and interested constituents. I've said that to city councils in the past, that it is a two-way communications. I'm here to address the changes in the landlord registration and 27, 28, 29 in that line of order. Because to consult, to change, not in ordinance, but the city charter, and do not reflect what this council is supposed to be, is a committee form of government, that each and every one of you should have a certain segment of the city charter to become resident experts in when it comes to housing, public housing, not public housing, but housing the public in the private sector. There is no reason why these changes could not have been discussed with the council and the landlords if we used the mechanisms that were necessary and already in place to have those consultations, to speak to one or two people about this issue, and to have one person who, well, let's go historic. It was the chairman, former chairman years back, who instituted this landlord registration, and that was Sam Frishon. And Sam and I argued intensely about this issue. Sam put that into place, and when it went into place, he was no longer a landlord. He walked away from the business because the business was too onerous for him, for whatever reason. And today, I'm finding out that another city councilman who used to be a landlord is responsible for this. And it turns out, he's walked away from being a landlord too, because it's, I don't know, I guess it's too onerous. I know that there's other circumstances around this, and I'm not going to get into those circumstances. But something as important as this, as John Percy had pointed out, that a significant change in any one thing can have catastrophic or blessing outcomes in other things. When we do what we're doing, we drive the landlords' businesses out of business, and then they are replaced by what people call slum landlords. And I'm also going to say, because I used to be the consultant for the Landlords Association 10, 12 years ago, that most of the problem is the slum tenants, because we protect the tenants as a government as though they are little sheep. But we do not protect those who provide for them. And I have to say this, now I'm looking at a Republican. Thank you. I'm looking at a Republican council for the most part. I see this thing as, I see the new laws coming out over gun control. We want the criminal dot to have guns, so we put the onus on the honest people who we don't have to worry about. I say this, that we need to have a public hearing on this. This needs to be tabled tonight until such time that we can do this, so that it can be reviewed and that you guys can meet with groups of landlords so that we could get this thing right. It's a good thing to get it right. I'm not saying that anything's particularly bad in this, but the process sucks and that what we're doing is we're hurting one of the most productive businesses in our city, and that is providing residential housing for people that need it. If not, you're going to have slums on top of slums on top of slums. Thank you, Ms. Clerk, Mrs. Clerk.
Sandy Mon, item number 27, 28, and 29. Sandy Mon. And we'll move on to Irene Lynch. Irene Lynch. Okay, Chris. Okay, Chris Z. Chris Z. Please state your item, agenda numbers.
So you want to speak for the good of the community?
Yeah.
Okay, put your name on there.
All right, thank you.
Nathan P. Nathan P. Palmer. Okay, moving on. Karen Mock. Please state your agenda item numbers as you approach the podium.
27, 26, 27, and 28, or 27, 28, yeah, and 29.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm a landlord, and I have been paying the landlord association or rental, I'm sorry, I forgot what it's called, the rental fee for several years now. And I'm wondering what it actually does. Where is this revenue going? Because when I've had a problem, I never get a phone call. I don't get an email, nothing. There's no communication with me whatsoever when there's an issue. So I do get a letter, just like everyone else does, if there is a code enforcement issue. But that's not done through landlord registration. That's done through ownership records, right? The tax roll. So my question is, if you're going to do something like this, there should be a reason for it. And if there is an issue, if the police are called, if the fire department's called, if code enforcement's called, if there's a problem, there should be a way to communicate with the landlords. So that's it. Thank you.
Not sure of the spelling, but it looks like me near Matt. Tammy Shukla or Sukla? Are you here? Okay.
Tammy, did you want to speak?
Oh, okay. And Tyree Cox? And Patricia Cox? Okay, and that is it.
Okay, so. No, you'll have to wait to the good of the community now. Okay, let's go through and review the agenda items. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to move too quick. Mayor, any updates from the administration?
Chair, I'm the council. I would like you to pay particular attention to the report that the controller will give you this evening. As I have been saying to various business organizations, development councils, and media outlets, what you'll hear tonight doesn't, it's not a shiny new thing, but it is a fundamental piece of how our community can begin to obtain the respect and the interest of the development and banking community. You're going to hear tonight about something that the city of Niagara Falls has been able to achieve for the first time in about a half a dozen years, and to do it in the middle of a pandemic. And you're going to hear as well how rating agencies have viewed what we've been able to do as a government. Much of what this administration can get done, particularly in the fiscal bit of our government, comes with partnership and cooperation from the council. So other than that, I know that with regard to these items, each of you have had some questions with regard to the agenda items. I will address those as we go through it. But I just wanted to say as an administrative piece, I ask you to please pay close attention to the controller's report tonight.
So on an annual basis, the office of the state controller uses a fiscal stress monitoring system, and it examines the annual financial information that's reported by each municipality. system, and it examines the annual financial information that's reported by each municipality. The analysis, it provides an objective assessment of the fiscal challenges facing the individual local governments and school districts, and identifying situations where corrective actions may be needed. It's a, they have various categories that relate to fund balance, your operating deficits, your cash positions, the amount of debt that you may have, and essentially your expenses as well, your fixed costs, what you have to cover, what revenue you have to cover your fixed costs at a minimum. And we were recently provided our designation based off of our fiscal 2021 year. What I have here is a comparison over the last five years. You can see back to 2017 through 2020, we were in a range that had us as a significant fiscal stress. There is a scoring mechanism that they use. It's a, there's no designation, susceptible, moderate, and significant. You can see the last four years, we had significant fiscal stress based on their ratings. I'm pleased to announce that for 2021, our, our score of forty-two point five reduces that significant, not only to moderate, susceptible, but we have no designation based off of the state's scoring system.
That's great news.
So to, to drop that much is a significant move, and it's a testament to the work that's been done internally, so, and, and the results from a positive 2021 activity. The bond rating update, so we recently went through one of our bond ratings, and this is with Fitch. They do a review based off of 2021 activity, how we're doing in 2022, and where we look going forward into 2023. We were previously rated triple B minus with a negative outlook. For Fitch, triple B minus is essentially the lowest grade before you fall into the non-investment grade area, and we had a negative outlook. They recently came out with an update, and we maintained the triple B minus, but we improved our outlook to stable. And again, that's a positive reflection of our financial activity. The Fitch's report even goes hand in hand with what was presented earlier from, from John Percy, and again, with all of our financial improvements that you, that we've communicated to you for 2021, and the rebound that we had from, from 2020. So they, they were able to update the outlook from negative to stable, and they even made mention that with continued improvements, the potential to improve our triple B minus rating in accordance with their scoring parameters to, to hopefully improve that. So a couple, a couple of good updates there related to the state's rating of our fiscal condition, and also continued improvement from a bond market. And there'll be additional rating calls that we have with, with Moody's and with S&amp;P, and those will likely be coming over the next couple of months.
I, being I've been here the longest, and I've watched this happen, I got to say thank you to you and to the administration, because I've seen what's gone in, I've seen previous administrations, I, I've seen stuff, and what you guys have done fiscally has been just outstanding. I, I haven't had to argue or fight, which I used to have to do constantly to try and get sound financial decisions in the city, and I didn't have much of a voice back then because I was the only man on the totem pole fighting. And I gotta say, thank you, thank you, because when I leave here at the end of next year, I'm going to leave here proud and happy, because the city's going to be in the black, and I thank you guys for it.
And I think it's important, and I think I sent that report out to everyone, it's very important for the public to know, we were the only city that was on the fiscally stressed category for four consecutive years, the only municipality in New York State. If you look at the 221, there's still some of the same municipalities that were on that for the last two years, and Niagara Falls doesn't even show up. And some of this, you know, you'll, you'll hear communities talk, we have ARP funds, our sales tax was great, that's what's helped us, but other municipalities have received ARP funds, too, and they're still in a significantly distressed area. So we're doing some things right in this city. This administration, and I think what we're looking at is an administration that is kind of following the plan that has been outlined in the 2017 State Controller's Report. And what that report said was collaboration with communities, shared services, all our new employees are paying into health insurance. There were a number of things on that report that we're finally starting to see help us from a financial situation. So I think if you don't understand the importance of this report, the city is moving in the right direction financially, and it, and it's good to hear that, so. Thanks, Dan. And community happens, I don't know if anyone has anything to report out about community happens, happenings?
Just, if I may, Mr. Chairman, before the, between now and the end of the week, we will be communicating plans for Halloween for this year. I'll make sure that the council's aware for, or just sort of having another go-round with the Department of Eds and the District.
Just to make sure we're all on the same page, we'll make sure that you're aware of that before we announce the.
I had my mask on tonight for Halloween.
Is it, is it true that, as we go to Mayor's House, you get the full-size candy bar?
Mr. Majors, do we move forward? I know we have a couple of changes here.
Sorry, too, we're reviewing the agenda, and there's a couple housekeeping matters that need to be addressed. First and foremost, there will be, there's a need for amendment to agenda item five that requires some Buffalo Avenue areas to insert a program, program extension. In paragraph two of the agenda item, it indicates that the amount of money that would be in the fund would be eighteen thousand dollars. That is incorrect, and the actual number is thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. So we would need an amendment to reflect that prior to the vote, so.
I make a motion to amend.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Councilchairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
That will be amended number five on the agenda. There's also a second amendment that's necessary, and this is on item, agenda item number nineteen. This regards the approval of transfer of city-owned properties relative to the property purchase program. And this particular item, the, in paragraph two, it indicates in the body of the item that it's fifty-two residential lots, and there's also an attachment that lists the properties, the attachment lists the proper number, which is fifty-three. So the first, and the first page, it should indicate that this is fifty-three residential lots, so there'll be an amendment that's necessary on this item as well.
And make a motion.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Councilchairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Agenda has been approved. Amended.
And that will be amended number nineteen relative to the agenda today. There are also a few walk-on items regarding, first, for agenda item, and this would be added as agenda item number thirty. This is relative to an intermunicipal agreement with, between the city and the county of Niagara regarding the transfer of a vehicle, it's a Chevrolet Tahoe, from the Niagara Falls Sheriff's, excuse me, from the Niagara County Sheriff's Department to the Niagara County, or, excuse me, Niagara Falls Fire Department, so from the county to the city fire department.
Make a motion to add it to the agenda.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Councilchairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
It has been approved.
And that will be added as agenda item number thirty. The second item is related to suppl, a supplemental agreement to purchase hardware, software, and web services from Axon Enterprises. This is for body cameras, tasers, virtual reality training for the Niagara Falls Fire Department, the council approved, or, excuse me, the Niagara Falls Police Department, sorry. This is a, an amendment or a supplement to a contract that was approved by the council in December of last year, so we would need a motion to add that to the agenda.
Make a motion to add it to the agenda.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Councilchairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
A walk-on has been approved.
And that will be added as agenda item number thirty-one. There's an additional item, this is regarding the reorganization in the finance department's billing and collection office, change of title from billing and collection clerk to a account clerk, same grade, at the grade seven, so we would need a motion to add that to the agenda.
Make a motion to add it to the agenda.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Councilchairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Item number thirty-two has been approved.
And the last item would be to be added as item number thirty-three to the agenda. This is regarding a request for approval to settle and pay a property damage claim of Patricia Gibbons in the amount of one hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-four cents that is from the law department.
I make a motion to add it.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Councilchairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Item number thirty-three has been approved.
And that is all, so now we can, can go forth with the review of the agenda items.
Thank you, Chris.
Agenda item number one.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to agenda item number one, I want to call to the council's attention the fact that some of these licenses that involve pets, it brings to mind the fact that this council is going to have to engage with the administration to determine where we're going to go in the future with regard to how we deal with strays, insofar as our contract with the SPCA has a time limit. So I just want to make sure that this evening, I bring to your attention for the first time in a while, because we haven't spoken about it in a while, that we are going to have to come up with some solution to that, and the costs associated therewith.
Agenda item number two.
Mr. Chairman, you understand, obviously as lifelong resident, that this Porter Road Bridge problem has been a longstanding problem. We are, we have now been put in a position where we are going to be required to do some mandatory work by the United States, the New York State Department of Transportation. So this particular agenda item really speaks to our ability to get the appropriate project scope and design prepared for us.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of the council members have asked with regard to some of our activities with regard to the American Rescue Plan. Again, this is taking one of the police vehicles and improving it so that it is properly outfitted. To date, we have, out of the total of forty vehicles, we have acquired twenty-seven of them. Of the approximate two million dollars assigned to that acquisition, we have spent one point two million plus or minus, and have about seven hundred thousand plus or minus with regard to the remaining items.
Mayor, or?
Yes.
Or Tony, I don't know if you, what is the average lifespan of a police vehicle?
They, obviously.
I mean, I know it's a, it depends if we run into something or not, but.
Right, but also, also, I think we can speak from history, we have some vehicles in our fleet prior to the purchase that have been kicking around for, you know, eight or ten years. They're not the best of vehicles, and I think typically the problem is, these vehicles aren't driven like how my mom, you know, she's going to church, she's going to her beauty salon. So these things are getting beaten up every day.
And I ask that question because I think who's ever here in five years from now, those ARP funds will not be here, and as we go through buying these new vehicles, we better have a replacement plan in place, because it's going to be expensive when these, all these vehicles we're getting now are going to be expiring at the same time.
I have had a meeting with a vendor, today is Wednesday, I had a meeting with a vendor, I can't remember if it was the end, it was the end of last week, and we are talking about it, and I, I don't want to present something to you that isn't fully, fully baked, but we are talking about just that idea, how do we make sure that we don't just continue a cycle?
And I think as we go through these ARP funds, we know we're getting some, a lot of city equipment, we almost got to look at a replacement program, be ready for the future.
Well, as well, you got to make sure that we, because, you know, Department of Public Works is usually one of the first to get cut whenever that we get into the budget, so if we only have three, four, maybe five maintenance, working on all of the city equipment, we got to take that under consideration as well, so, you know, the upkeep of it, instead of just beating it to the ground and replacing it.
Agenda item number four.
Couple of the council members, Mr. Chairman, asked some questions with regard to this item. This is an item that is funded through Greenway Funding, a part of the New York State Power Authority settlement proceeds. This particular item speaks to shoreline work. Project area will be two point two acres on the public Hyde Park Golf Course along Gill Creek. It will involve one of seven tributaries that flow into the river. The idea will be to improve water quality in that area, reduce the frequency of harmful algae blooms in the Hyde Park Lake along Gill Creek, and the goal of the project is to reduce pollution from stormwater runoff in several areas along the public golf course and the two outfalls that flow into Gill Creek. Project will have green infrastructure practices, which include exfiltration systems and stormwater diversions, flood plain benches, and infiltration trench, fringe wetlands, and natural regeneration areas. These green infrastructure solutions will capture two point three million gallons of untreated stormwater runoff annually, and additional outcomes will include the reduced nutrient sediment and pollutant input into the Great Lakes system, reducing algae blooms in nearshore areas, improved habitat for fish, wildlife, and pollinations, and the neighborhoods around Hyde Park will benefit from reduced stormwater runoff, which in turn will improve the water quality in the Niagara River. The anticipated piece for this is the design, design phase began this spring, runs through next spring, and the implementation phase will go through spring of next year to fall of 2024, and then obviously there'll be continued monitoring to make sure that it stays established through the fall of 2025. I will say that with regard to this particular project, our administration insisted that the Buffalo Niagara Water Keepers, and they have done this as they've done in other areas, have been in consultation with the golf course operators in order for best practices to be used with regard to golf course operations, as well as the work being done by the water keepers.
Agenda item number five.
Mr. Chairman, again, some council members have asked for some questions on this. You've recently approved the amended agenda item number five to, to accurately reflect the amount of money. As you can see, these funds are simply for exterior building improvements, code violation corrections, and site improvements, and there is a limit to the amount, and it has to have matching assistance from the owner. So at, at one point, this was believed to be exhausted, and so there weren't any pending applications, so now at this point, obviously, with this publication, there may be some others coming forward.
Agenda item.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask one quick question on this, just to be sure I'm reading this correctly, so it's retroactive to 2020 for five years, so that means it'll expire in 2025, or when, or when the funds are exhausted?
Whichever comes first.
Correct.
Agenda item number six.
Council, this raised a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, the alley in that area is our property, and we had inquired from National Grid in assistance with the construction being done off of Rainbow Boulevard for the burying of certain electrical facilities. Obviously, the timeline for which the city and National Grid would come to an understanding and agreement was somehow slower than what obviously the. and agreement was somehow slower than what obviously the construction required, and because the construction folks wanted to move the project along, and it was our obligation to get the project done, National Grid insisted that if they wanted the project to commence now, then they would have to enter into the agreement to pay for it. So essentially, a private entity paid for the city's responsibility. And so all we're doing through the American Rescue Plan funds is paying for that improvement to our alleyway, which was paid for by the private company.
Mr. Mayor, I have another question on that.
Sure.
So is it possible that going forward, the administration and council, for their American Rescue Plan funding, could we address other alleyways in the city?
Well, this isn't just for the alleyway, this was for the electrical service, they had to be buried under the alleyway.
Correct.
Because it had to be done in an area that we owned, we were the ones that had to take the responsibility to pay for it to get done. So this wasn't for an alleyway improvement, I want to make sure that it's clear, this was not to improve an alley, because there are a ton of alleys in our city that I would love to be able to spend money and improve. I mean, we, we work hard to improve our roads with a little bit of help from our friends, but in the, in the end, this was not for alley improvements, this was for the National Grid work, and the National Grid work had to be put under our alleyway. So that's the only reason why you see the word alley in there is because that's where the wires went.
And Mayor, I think to hold that project up and go through the red tape, that would have been, I think this is a good business decision for the city and for the developer.
Item Number Seven.
You may be aware, council members, council chair, you may be aware of this program. In fact, the program exists in a broader sense through MedPAC, which allows for certain pharmacies to take unused prescription drugs. This particular program is in partnership with the city through our police departments, and with regard to the point of return, as indicated in the agreement, there will be only one point of return, and that will be at nineteen twenty-five Main Street, there'll be a receptacle right at the police station, so if there are unused prescription drugs, we know from the statistics that often accidental deaths or other traumas are created by unused prescription drugs just sort of laying around in the household medicine cabinet. So if you have those, this is a great opportunity to dispose of them to protect you and your families.
Mr. Mayor, is, is there a threshold that needs to be met for the program to expand or extend beyond the three years?
I think, it's just a matter of funding.
Okay.
Certainly, participation will be important.
Right, and that's what I was getting at, a threshold of what needs to be collected in order for it to, this is a great program.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that if the DEA can continue to provide funding for this, we will continue to be a part of the drug tape that program.
Agenda Item Number Eight.
Agenda Item Number Eight is an interesting agenda, and I thank the council for giving us the opportunity, and I know that some council members came out to a community meeting that we had in the neighborhood area. Let me just say that what we are doing in that area with regard to pest control is nothing more than a test case. There is, there are pest problems everywhere from, from the end of the city on Lafayette all the way to Keogh Island, we have pest problems. And part of it is, as the, as the vendor indicated, some of that is going to come down to personal responsibility and resident participation. In this instance, we also realize that extermination, as the vendor indicated, is not really what's going to happen, it will be control, and the effort to control this is going to require participation with households in the area to do their part. In this little program area, we're going to try to see if we can provide information to homeowners to improve their situation so that they don't provide an attractive nuisance to these pests. So that you are all familiar with this, and this is just a ballpark number, the vendor indicated that if, and also indicated, by the way, at the community meeting, that this is unusual, it is unusual for a community government, local government, to take upon this responsibility, this is typically a responsibility where if you have the problem, you call the control, the pest control company. In this instance, we're going to test this out. If we ultimately decided to do this citywide, they have ballparked the cost at one point three million dollars, and so I think the council needs to be cognizant of the costs associated, because like you, we've, the administration has discussed this issue in a variety of other locations in the city. So this is a test case, we're also looking for some assistance from our county representatives, we hope that we'll be able to get some, that'll help us at least make sure we tighten all the boundaries around this test case.
One of the things I want to make really clear is true, it is a pest control, I mean, a pest problem in the whole city, and, you know, I'm for, you know, helping out the area in LaSalle concerning the rat problem. I just want us as a governing body to keep the same energy when other portions of the city reach out to us about skunks, possums, rats, mice, and all of the other raccoons and all type of other pests that we have, especially with all of the dilapidated horrible houses that we have, and that, all it does is pretty much, and it goes throughout the whole city, this pest problem didn't just happen, so I just want to make sure that we're taking just as much initiative to, you know, sixty-four K, sixty-five thousand, I'm with it, I'm okay with it, just make sure that when the other portions of the city that has been struggling with this for a long time, reach out to us, that we have that same type of energy. And, and we, and here's the thing, it's been, it's been reported a lot, and I can say...
You do realize that all we're doing here is a test case to see if this works.
Right, I mean...
We don't know if it'll be successful or not, so that's why...
And then we tested for the rest of the city yet. Well, I mean, we're talking about rats now, I'm talking about possums, raccoons, and other stuff that has been really plaguing, I'll say, especially over here in the fourth district, because I live here, so I know what it looks like.
Well, they're in pride, too.
Right, so, so my thing is, is that let's, let's, like, you know, put some of these test kits over this way, too, that's all I'm saying.
And I want to make a couple of comments about the community responsibility with pest control, the road control. The Orkin representative was very, very good in telling residents, in giving a little history on rats, and rats only go from one hundred to three hundred feet. A female rat can produce six litters a year, eight to twelve in each litter, they can produce pups within six weeks of being born. So what the Orkin rep was saying, there's some personal control here, people need to put their garbage away, people need to clean up after their pets, people need to make sure if grass is high, they need to make sure it's cut, and there was an interesting conversation that went on during that public meeting, and Mayor, I didn't share this with you, the Orkin representative said rats will eat anything, they'll go to the nearest point of feeding. People had gardens, and the guy goes, well, I'm not going to take my garden away. The neighbor goes, then you're just going to keep on having rats. The guy goes, well, I'm not, no one's going to tell me to take my garden away, but that's a personal choice, and you make that personal choice, you're making a choice to attract rats. So one of the things Orkin representatives said, and this goes for citywide, we need to make sure we take personal responsibility for our properties and help our neighbors out if we can in regards to just keeping properties clean, because you can see by the reproduction rate of rats, all you need is a couple, and the next thing you're going to know, you're going to be infested, so...
I think if we can also add, too, when we talk about, I call them the bargain basement slum lords of those people who have bought so much property here that don't live here, and they let it go, and they let it die down, and we have the overgrown grass that we're talking about, most of, a lot of the time, it's not us, it's not a lot of us that live here, it's a lot of the, you know, the bad players that we talk about. So at some point, we're going to have to make sure, and how are we going to hold them accountable, because we, you know, once the grass grows high, well, you call DPW, well, then you're going to get put on a list, and you got to try to call three-one-one and all this stuff that's kind of like, you know, put middlemen in a place. I think the biggest thing is, is that we have to make sure that we hold those areas, you know, accountable as well, get more teeth in it.
I agree.
Agenda Item Number Nine.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to Item Number Nine, this continues to be a part of what we try to do each day here in this administration. We'll be working in collaboration with the Niagara Falls Water Board to provide for this additional location. They right now are outfitting the location for us to be able to inhabit it, as that the police department has, you know, we have, we have a station down here on the west side of the city, and this will provide a launchpad for the eastern end of the city with, it's not going to be permanent, it's not a permanent station, it won't be permanently manned, but what it will be, it is, it'll be a station where a report can be taken and some work can be done, rather than have to drive all the way back into the station to attend.
Agenda Item Number Ten.
Yes, after requiring the parcel of land, the parcels of land, was the opportunity for the purchase made public?
Mr. Mr.
And I mean visibly public, I'm not hidden in the fifth page of the Gazette, I'm talking about really public, and I think, I understand what Mr. Henry was talking about earlier, because it's a lot of land being sold, a lot of property, city property, and for the most part, there's no competitive network. I think the biggest thing is, is how do we compete? You know, we have people, developers, or people who say that they're developers, saying that they're going to do A, B, C, and X, Y, and Z, and if we don't put it out there and allow people, because there are people here who would love to invest in their own city, the city that they live in, but they don't get a lot of this information, and that, you know, it's kind of almost like who you know. So I think the thing is, is for us to have a competitive market when it comes down to development, and those who want to develop in areas like where there was someone who had it, they didn't do what they said they were going to do, and we took it back, at some point, when do we make sure that we make it really public to the rest of the community? You know what I mean?
I believe this went to the number two bidder, after we took the bag, and he went to the dead.
Mr. Chairman, this was put out for competitive bid, I think in two thousand and eighteen.
And he was, the one that's getting it now is the second bidder.
The second responsible bidder.
Right.
It has to be a responsible bidder, and so typically, if we are able to, and that, and that bidder continues to have interest, it's the most effective way to get the property back up into development, as well as, in this particular case, the, the entity selected in two thousand and eighteen allowed these properties to languish. I think you're all familiar with their location at the head of Third Street in Maine, and so we believe that we acted responsibly in recapturing and now getting them in the hands of the next responsible.
This wasn't a good thing in two thousand and eighteen, it was pretty controversial then, the group that it went to.
Yeah.
Very controversial back then. You know, I think the end of the agenda was very clear, it explains the history, it explains that we're going to the second highest bidder, and I always tell my colleagues, and a couple of these agenda items, they were, were looking at utilizing city property, always call the developers who are doing this, and you can speak to them. I, I know this developer, and they're good for Niagara Falls, New York, they are a good developer for Niagara Falls, New York, so...
I think I'm just looking at more so of a transparency type situation, where, like, is there a way that the average citizen could actually go find the list, or go on the internet and find a listing of the houses that the city owned that could possibly be for sale? Because I think for me, when we have a list of houses...
Councilmember, there's a surplus property, there's a surplus property sale that's going to happen?
Is this, is that...
And, and that'll be a list of properties...
I think it was just work, I was in the middle of actually speaking.
That he, that he talks about, there'll be a list of properties, and residents will be able to see that, and be able to purchase.
Excuse me, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I was actually speaking, if you could wait till I'm done.
Sure.
Thank you. So like I said, at the end of the day, if there is a space, because there are a lot of people that are investors, that, that would love to buy property and actually do something with it that actually lives here, so it's like a maze, it's like a puzzle, crossword puzzle, trying to find these city properties that are up for sale. So I asked the question, is there a place, is, can you go on the internet, can we go online and find, even on our city website, city properties that are for sale, instead of coming here and finding fifty-three or however many other ones, and selling them off, or voting, we're going to vote on it, right? So I think it's just, I'm looking for more transparency. Now you can speak.
Well, you know, I think that being familiar with government operation would be important. And when you're familiar with government operation, you realize that there are NREM sales, and those are on, on public notice, and there are surplus property sales, and those are on public notice, and the public notice would list the properties, and in fact, given the way in which we're going to deal with the surplus property auction, it will likely be done online. So either you have the capacity online in your home, or you can utilize the online facilities at the library, so residents would have a chance to take a look at the list and see what might, what might appeal to them. But that's just, that's just having a little knowledge of how the government operation is, and, and the more you become familiar with that, the more you're able to realize that there are these transparent ways for people to take a look at properties that they may be interested in, and then obviously, it's, it's the city's best interest to get these properties off of their hands and into the hands of private residents, back on the tax rolls, right? Because while all of these properties in today's listing are city-owned properties, they're generating nothing in terms of taxable property taxes.
They could cost us money, could have to...
Well, they do.
They could cut.
They do, and they're also, and they're also those properties that, that council members...
Can we please give respect to the people that are speaking?
And there's also those properties that people will complain, that you got to cut the grass, there's rodents here, and there's skunks here, and there's possums here. We're now going to be in a place where we're going to put those properties into the hands of private individuals. In some instances, they're developers, in other instances, they will be homeowners, who will, you know, relieve the city of the responsibility for those properties, expand their, their capacity to do things. But back to the issue of where will residents, the surplus property auction, which is probably going to be the first thing that's going to hit, will be an opportunity for residents to take a look at, at those properties that have already gone through the NREM sale, so we're going to have to do that, and they're sitting in a bucket of city properties that now will be put out to the public for the purposes of having somebody purchase them.
So you said online, right, you'll be able to find them?
Ultimately, ultimately, yes. Once, once we get to the surplus property auction, the auctioneer will actually have all these properties listed, and you'll be able to flip through them and see, you'll see the property, I don't, I don't know what the thumbnail information on it will be, I haven't seen the, the program yet, but conceptually, it's, the properties are listed, there might, there might even be like, you know, starting bid prices, right? And then ultimately, there'll be a timeframe within which those bids can go, bids will close, say, on such and such a day at midnight, and then those properties will ultimately be transferred, subject obviously to the certain requirements, ten percent down, and all of those other things, so that I know that you share the desire to get out of the landholding business. The city of Niagara Falls has to deal with the properties for which it has responsibility, parks, buildings, those things. So to have just lots and properties in neighborhoods, it's not good for the community, it's not good certainly for city workforce. Our DPW people and our parks people, you know, there was a significant reduction in two thousand and nineteen of both those staffs, and so, but the city didn't shrink in terms of its size, and they still have to do all the same work. So if we're able to get those properties into the hands of private individuals, responsibility becomes theirs, obviously, we, we still have an obligation to monitor and make sure, but at least it's no longer our, our property.
I mean, I'm with you with the fact that, you know, we definitely want to get these back on the tax roll, I'm not against that. I guess the thing that I'm saying is, is whenever it gets to the point where, you know, the system is set up in a, in a way that we can actually go in and see those, because I'm more so interested in creating more homeownership in the city of Niagara Falls.
That's what some of these...
Right, that's, so that's, so my thing is, is so we can actually go to a place and have a place that's set aside that says, this is where those properties are.
If I may, if I may, when we get to the surplus property sale, that'll be the deal, there will be a location on a site, and you will be able to go to it, and we'll, obviously we're going to publish it, I'm sure my friends at the Niagara Gazette will publish it, so that if you happen to breeze through the Gazette and see it, okay, that's the site, I can go there. I mean, the idea will be, you know, sitting here today, October fifth, we're not there yet, but that's the next thing in the pipeline, is to get the surplus property auction, because also, you know, whatever revenue we generate from the surplus property auction, inurest to the benefit of what we have to do in terms of developing our budgets, so, there's benefit all around.
If I can quickly add to the, sort of as a response to...
If I can quickly add to the, sort of as a response to the COVID pandemic, the online auctions are becoming a more popular way of selling properties. So in the past, when we would have a tax foreclosure auction, we would pack in four or five hundred people at a location, small space, and, and get it all done in a day. And working with an auctioneer, they've seen that it's been better results by doing an online auction where it's kind of like an eBay, almost, where you put a bid in, and there's so much time to respond. And, you know, all the parameters of that will be, you know, communicated for, for the process. Same way that you would get into a tax foreclosure auction would be the same way you would get into this online auction. So we're working on that, there'll be more information coming on that hopefully soon.
Would that be operated right off of the city website?
That'll all be, it'll likely be linked to the, to the auctioneer's site. Other municipalities have used this and have seen good results, so as more information comes available, I'm sure that they'll be communicated everywhere.
Thank you.
The idea would be to try and get you targeted to the right location.
The last auction for the, the city's share was in excess of $2 million.
Agenda item number 11.
Yes, number 11. So one of the primary objectives of a city council is to increase taxes, not increase taxes, excuse me, no, not that. Increase the tax base without increasing taxes, right? So why would we sell tax, sell these properties that would go untaxed to our housing authority? Has less than an arm's length reach of, of a relationship with the city, right? Due to, you know, we have, you know, our director of housing authority is also a community, he's over at community development as well. There has been really no indication what will happen with, what will be done with these properties, at least in the, in the, in this item that we received here. And I'm speaking because I grew up in that area, and I, and I've been fighting for that area for the longest. How do we develop a business district? I, I gotta read my notes, because I, I have a lot to say about this. On Highland Avenue, when we were giving away property, and the housing authority has had a reputation of not really running a business well, and that, that, with the, with the African Heritage Food Co-op, that, that building used to be owned by the housing authority as well, and those businesses failed. So Niagara Falls Housing Authority still owes the Highland Avenue area 42 promised, 42 promised taxable homes as a part of the HOPE 6 project. Until they fulfill that obligation, I don't think we should give them more property to sit on. I think more information is needed. That's just my take on it, because it's a why, for me, it's a why Highland Avenue, why? You know what I mean? I, I, I have, I have somewhat of an issue with these properties. We need, again, we need homeowners, we need, you know, people to actually, because let me just put it this way. That portion of the north end is the hub of low-income housing. It's been that way for decades. And I'll, I'll give 1140 Center Avenue, 1139 Center Avenue, 1149 Garden Avenue, 20G Plum Walk, that was in Unity Park. Those were the areas, I lived, I grew up in there, that, that area molded me, that's where my village was. So for me, I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're taking all things under consideration when it comes down to this. I would hope to see, not, not, for those of you who know the history of Highland Avenue, it actually used to be a very, very lucrative business zone. Lot of stores, a lot of, you know, local businesses, mom and pop businesses, shoe shines, you know, stores, convenience stores, laundromats, just a lot of different things that made, and then now I go there, and it seems like everything is low, just, just, you know, affordable housing is just, is just the, the, I just don't like that, you know what I mean? I want to make sure that if we did HOPE 6, and then we don't have those 42 houses, they're not here. And there, so there are not 42 families that has been home and, and actually have a, their own house. You already know what homeownership does, it gives you, it gives you, 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 I, I don't know, I'm kind of shaken up about it, you know what I mean?
I know exactly what you're saying, homeownership is an important piece, it's the American dream for everyone, it provides dignity, it gives individuals, you know, their own hopefulness. It's my understanding, in pursuit of the master plan of the housing authority, these parcels are designed for single-family home building. Now, I can't speak to how the housing authority's board will ultimately address the 42 properties that you referenced. But I know that with regard to these parcels, the idea is to take them and to revitalize and rehabilitate these parcels, to create essentially in this area, the ability for neighborhood. Again, I don't have, I don't know what the board and the housing authority is going to do to address those 42, I think it was 42 single-family homes, but I do know in this instance, the master plan of the housing authority is to develop some single-family homes for individuals in the, in the community. So I would think that, you know, our opportunity to get these properties into the hands of building through the housing authority's effort can create, my sense is it would create neighborhood, at least in that area, and then we build from there, because in order for us to grow, and I'm familiar with the business district that you described, in order to grow that business district, we do have to increase, you know, residents and homeownership, we got to build neighborhood too. And I'm, and I'm just, our proposal is that with the housing authority, we're able to do that.
And these properties right here will be addressed, fixed up, and able to be sold to residents as, as, as a home, as the, for home buy, as, as a home buyer?
Again, I don't know how the housing authority's board is going to address these properties in that regard, but I do know that it's their intention, based on their master plan, to develop these as single homes. That is some, some project. So with regard to how they end up getting these homes into the hands of occupants, again, I'm not familiar with how the board will end up attacking that portion of their master plan.
Dante, one of the things I think you talked to, you know, you think the housing authority failed that community at one point with those 42 out, and I wasn't aware of that, but here's what I think, the leadership in the housing authority with Cliff Scott as a leader, he's proven to be a, a great leader and a, an advocate for homeownership. I, I know that from the conversations I've had with him, so, so I think, you know, for the city to, to release these lots, and again, I always look at, it's proposed not only to rehabilitate and revitalize, revitalization of these properties, and that's what we need in the city, you know, so I, I, I understand what you're saying, you, you have some bad taste in your mouth from recent housing.
I mean, I'm just looking at the fact that, one, I'm all about homeownership. Now, and if we don't have the information right now from the board or whatnot, so maybe we should table this until we find out what the plans are to do with these, before we actually release them, if you ask me. I, I feel like, you know, get just, you know, pretty much given the $5,000. If it's not going to be towards homeownership, and it's going to be towards another house that's going to be rented, because that's, that's the issue that we have, we got more renters, and we trying to get people in houses to own them, so they can have that personal pride for their, their, their space. We want people to clean up, we want people to do X, Y, and Z, but we want to keep them renting. They don't have a sense of ownership, they don't have a sense of, like a stake in the city that they live in, because they're, they're being, they're, you're going to pay rent, and then you're subject to whatever the landlord chooses to do with the rent.
I think, if I may, I think that, you know, based upon the discussions I've had with a couple of board members, I think that the goal of these properties is for private homeownership. I think, I think the goal is to get these properties, these single-family homes built, and get this homeownership into the community, exactly what you're looking for. And, and clearly, the, the housing authority will have, I think, a better bandwidth to bring in a housing developer in order to be able to build these houses and get them up and running for, for, for families to own. So I think that the, that the intent of the housing authority, and I guess I don't want to mix my, my commentary, I don't know how they're going to address the 42, I guess that's what I'm saying. But I do know the board's intention with this is homeownership. So their intention with these nine properties, I think it's nine, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it's nine.
The intent with these nine properties is to revitalize, rehabilitate, and provide for homeownership in these locations.
In my talking to Mr. Scott, that was, you know, Shady and I got on it as well, that he was looking, they were going to put it together, and then they were going to give it. They don't like to own single-family homes.
Okay, so instead of us voting on this as is, can we get that in black and white on here before we vote on it? Maybe we can table it, and so when it, if, because right now, I'm hearing a lot of, I think, until we know exactly what they're going to do with it, I, I want to make sure that we're making a conscious decision, because it's affecting a whole area. And I'm talking about, and I'm talking from experience, because I deal with this area all the time. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, this is not, you know, I'm not.
Let me, may I make a question?
We can, you know, as I've said to a couple of the council members as they were asking questions about some other items on the agenda, you know, we can certainly set the terms of transfer. If you're telling us that as a part of this transfer, we want it to include the fact that these properties are going to become private homeownership, then we can do that.
Right, that's all, that's all I've been wanting.
If you say to me, if, if this board says, we would like you, when you, when you engage in the agreement to transfer these properties to the, to the housing authority, that, that be in there as how this property is going to be transferred, okay then. Because if it doesn't, we'll do the same thing we've done in other instances, we just claw it back. So I'm happy to have you, if you, if you want to go forward with the transfer with the understanding that the transfer documents will include some commitment to homeownership in these parcels, fine.
Thank you. Thank you.
Addendum number 12.
Let me, there, there was much discussed about the Restore New York Grant Program. First, let me just read this to the council. The Restore New York Communities Initiative provides municipalities with financial assistance for the revitalization of commercial and residential properties. The program encourages community development and neighborhood growth through the elimination and redevelopment of blighted structures. What happens is, the state of New York would make available the sum of up to $3 million, $3 million for one project. That's why this is different than my description to you of surplus property. This is really, how does a developer come in and say, okay, look, I'm going to wrap my arms around this portion of this area, and I'm going to develop this this way, and they come in with a proposal. That letter of intent was sent to Empire State Development in Albany. As a matter of fact, I can tell you that in a comment from the program specialist with whom our staff was communicating, they said that of the three that were provided, and I will give you the best description I can of the three, of the three provided, the one that you're going to see tonight seems to check all of the boxes for what this program should do in terms of the revitalization of neighborhoods. So there were three submitted. One is the one that you're going to review this evening. The second was for the revitalization of the old, please forgive me, it's either the Falls Street Station or the Falls Street Fair, it's that concrete building that ramps around the church downtown. And what they were going to do is take a portion and turn it into workforce housing. Now, I tried to describe for the state the fact that the First Street Apartments, which is what that second project was, seems to me to be more the nature of a special project. And here's what I mean by that, I'm going to read to you the definition of a special project. Special projects are entitled to a significantly greater funding, up to $10 million. And a special project is a project that results from severe economic injury to a community, leaving a highly visible and blighted property or properties in the central business district of a distressed community, which has a depressing effect on the overall economic development of the community. So resurrecting that building, which sits there downtown, in the business district, the central business district, we thought that the First Street Apartments were qualified, the better targeted for that. Unfortunately, they will have to reapply for that special project designation. The third was a brewery project, brewery project which had great, which has great potential in one of the, one of the business districts, but again, didn't necessarily address the issue of community development and neighborhood growth. So this particular project, highlighted here in item number 12, speaks to a series of properties that RJ Davis and Company Development want to renovate into a series of different types of structures. Single-family home rentals, two-family home rentals, a multi-family home rental, downtown lofts, and then, then a few vacation rentals, all in that neighborhood. And so from the perspective of what Restore New York is targeted for, this is going to take those neighborhoods on Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh, and really start to infill some of those spots and spaces and properties that are just sitting there blighted. Right, right.
They are not planning on keeping them, they are to sell to private owners.
I just like your wording.
That's all I like. I got it right here.
I got it on the text.
I got it.
I just wanted to make sure what you're commenting. And I, and I guess that works with our corporation counsel, right?
That, that you do that rephrasing the word, because it's not in, because it's not in writing? And it's like, you know how it is, if it's not in writing, it didn't happen.
Sell.
Okay, but.
That's all I can go, and I do believe Cliff to be a man of his word.
I will, I will, um, in time of your role, if. It's your intention to add that piece to the approval of those properties, that those properties be for homeownership, private homeownership, by all means, put it in there, and then we'll know what we're doing.
Agenda item number 13.
Agenda item number 13. RJ Niagara LLC is a group that has provided some developments. You may be familiar with the property at 729 Mont Eagle, or you may be familiar with the property at 545 Main. This development group has taken some difficult structures and really done a beautiful job in, you know, resurrecting them and improving them. Again, let me, let me stress to you that the lion's share of what we want to do here today is move properties from city ownership and the generation of nothing into the hands of private owners and developers who can generate these into, back on the tax rolls, to generate revenue for the city, as well as to beautify neighborhoods that they're in.
And I want to just add one comment both to 12 and 13. I've either spoken to or saw the results of both these companies, and, you know, there's a track record of success with both these developers that is going to bring success to the city with these. to the city with these properties, so...
Agenda item number fourteen.
Agenda item number fourteen, members of the council, is a part of that whole agenda item, I think, three or five. This is really the group that was the second responsible bidder back in two thousand eighteen. I don't know what, quite frankly, at that point, this responsible bidder actually had a positive track record in the community. And sometimes I wonder whether or not personalities get in the way, or something gets in the way, but for four years, from November two thousand eighteen to October two thousand twenty-two, those properties languished with a St. Catherine's company that had no intention of doing anything down there with those properties. And so, the second responsible bidder in this instance is the entity you see here. Again, they have a track record with regard to positive and attractive development in our community, and we're looking forward to them continuing that in this very same neighborhood that they're in.
That property actually cost us money, because we demolished it when you couldn't even get a code enforcement officer to sign for the demolition. The mayor actually signed for the demolition, and it never should've come down. Never should, there was a bad deal all the way through, through and through and through.
Let me just get this out. And I'll go on, Mr. Chairman. The building that was taken down, for those who are interested in historic preservation, was among the oldest buildings in the city of Niagara Falls. So, it hit the wrecking ball real quick. But it was...
There's worse properties on Main Street than that property was even close to being. And it happened in one day, real fast.
Agenda item number fourteen.
Is this fourteen or fifteen?
Fifteen, fifteen.
Agenda item number fifteen.
Okay, thank you. Number fifteen, again, this is part of our effort to collaborate with some of the entities that are out there, both our neighbors as well as, as county entities. The Niagara Orleans Land Bank is also another opportunity for us to put properties into the hands of a group that can, that has broader marketing strength. Ultimately, these properties, once sold to a developer or to a homeowner, excuse me, would be at market rate and would ultimately turn into productive properties again on the tax rolls.
Agenda item number sixteen.
As you know, we are always looking for those opportunities within city government to reorganize, to make us more efficient. This is another one of those exercises within the fire department where the structure that existed is now being upgraded to today's efficiencies.
Agenda item number seventeen.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Concern about this, it's eighty-five thousand dollar position. Is this the, is this the one that Mr. Scott is going right, taking, is running right now?
No, no.
This is a different position?
This is economic development.
Not community development. Okay, so, question, I'm wondering, eighty-five thousand dollars, and we're going to bump it up thirty thousand dollars. Is it, is it, how public is this position as far as, as far as the posting of this job?
It's posted on our website, it's posted on Indeed, it's posted at a couple of other...
Nobody, nobody?
At eighty-five? At eighty-five, we struggled to get anybody. And then, and those who applied simply didn't have the qualifications to meet the minimum qualifications. You see, the funny thing is, is that it's highly competitive. You know, the economic development market is highly competitive, and we're not just competing with Western New York. You know, you're out there looking for economic development people, just the same as other communities along the Great Lakes, other communities from coast to coast. And so, immediately, people who aren't interested in coming to the Northeast or coming into winter locations are gonna check us off, unless, unless we have a competitive wage. Now, in this instance, the city of Niagara Falls hasn't had a designated economic development director for a good, over two decades. What, what that has forced us to do is be subservient to those suggestions that state agencies may give to us as to what we need. What we need is to sort of get our own quarterback, run our own game, have somebody here who is advancing the interests for the local government to develop in our city. We don't have that. And without that, we're sort of, you know, we're constantly trying to catch perhaps somebody else's scrap. I want, would like to allow our administration to get into the game and to really become a bit more aggressive in the area of luring people. You have a brand name here, members of the council, you have the opportunity to attract nine million people. But more importantly, you have twelve million people who live ninety minutes east and west of the city of Niagara Falls, three million on, on the, on the east, eastward ninety minutes, and nine million westward. I consider them all locals when they're ninety minutes away. And what we need to do is we need to start providing those types of developments and/or attractions, as well as business opportunities, to lure those people in here. That's why when Mr. Percy was speaking about our tourism industry, when one in five members of our community are working in that industry, we need to do better in terms of being able to provide them with a twelve-month job. An independent city economic development director is focused on that. And so, we're, we're proposing this through a series of other savings that have happened throughout, throughout the government infrastructure, the government framework, but also to help us to be competitive in, in what is a very competitive market. I'll tell you one thing, too, ultimately, you know, subject to, to our ability to get a candidate and to get him or her in here, you know, right now, while the, while the salary that we're proposing is at the top end of certainly the regional market, I think what it, what it will show is, I think, our committed focus to really improving, not just, and remember, this isn't just for tourism, this economic development individual needs to go out there and start working in those manufacturing areas. I mean, right now, council members, I'm, I'm fielding question, I'm, I'm fielding calls from Houston, Texas, I'm fielding calls from, from this place just out of Chicago, Illinois, I'm fielding calls from, from a business in Belgium. And while I don't mind doing it, and it's certainly something I enjoy going through in terms of negotiating contracts and, and, and those deals, you need somebody who's doing that full-time. Because in the midst of doing that, I'm also doing other things that require executive office attention. So I'm just proposing to you that this makes us have our own quarterback.
Kind of developing a couple of the options.
It is.
Yeah, so I mean, you're, we're really, I think this is almost the way I read it, it's almost like we're making a gain here.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a modest savings to this, to this merge. But again, you know, I, I, I think one of the council members asked about return on investment, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I mean, but remember, this is an executive office position, and, you know, someone's gonna hit the ground running here. We haven't had, we haven't had any qualified candidates that, that have been regional. You know, our most qualified candidates come to us from outside the area. And so, we're hoping that if we can lure one in, then it's gonna be up to him or her, they gotta acclimate themselves, they have to become familiar with who the players are, and then what we have to do is set them off. And I had, I had a conversation with one candidate, and the candidate actually mentioned, I was talking about, about municipalities that our government should be looking to for expansion and economic opportunities, and this candidate mentioned something completely out of left field, which I would've never thought of. But this candidate was already thinking about areas where you can sort of make gains, because those areas are shrinking. And, and the advantage you have is that it's Niagara Falls. It's not like you have to convince people that it's a real place, they know about it.
As I've mentioned a lot of times, this, the, the water itself, understanding what the young man from, you know, the state was saying, the water itself doesn't have a problem bringing people here. If we tore down the casino and half of everything else in that corner, millions of people are still gonna come just to see that water fall over that cliff. That's a God-given gift to us, at the end of the day. No one, no one is controlling that water, the problem that we have is keeping people here. And hopefully, whoever gets this position begins to focus, focus more so on our local businesses, pushing away from that corner, because for us, I mean, the true story is, we do understand that three-quarters of the percent of the funding that comes in that corner of the state park goes right to Albany anyway.
Right.
So, for me, I think our heavy level of development needs to take place within the rest of the city.
But council member, let me tell you, you're so right, because right now, that's why I said in my, my initial comments, we've been relying on the state to do our economic development. The state's interest in economic development is going to be focused. So we need to have our own quarterback. And the hope with your approval on this position is that we get ours. And now this person's focused on, what's Niagara Falls need? How do we keep our locals? That's why I said twelve million, ninety minutes east and west. I'm aware of the numbers, it's, and that twelve million is far greater than the number of people who visit us as tourists. I've said over and over again, it may sound unusual, but I really don't care about the tourists, 'cause as you've said, they come anyway. If we did nothing else, if we just all went to sleep, they still come. So right now, the key is the local market.
And, and Mayor, I just want to say that when I saw this, I was a little concerned about the increase, and, and I spoke to you about that. But, you know, one of the things I did, I, I looked at communities that the state controllers often compares to us, such as Troy, Binghamton, Utica, Schenectady, and I looked at their staffing in our economic departments, I looked at our staffing for a city that if you, that you have described has potential to bring all these people here, our economic development department is actually funded less than some of these other cities. And I think that's important to know. And what we've done in this city for many years, and for other councils, we have thought about saving money, and, and we should do that as, as council members. But I think this is an opportunity that, that we have as a council team to do something out of the ordinary, and we're gonna get criticized for this. How can you pay someone that much money in Niagara Falls? I'm for it, 'cause I think we need to get someone that's a top-level person, eighty-five thousand doesn't do it. Hundred-and-fifteen thousand does attract people that may have never looked at that job for eighty-five thousand. And as I said to the mayor, the one thing we have to do, a year from now, if this person was hired, I'd say, "Give him a year," you have to look at the metrics of that position. What did they do to earn that money? And if we feel it's not worth it, then we need to relook at the funding and the position.
Absolutely.
I am all for this, I think we need to get a quality person. We need to spend the money, and I think this is good for the taxpayers of Niagara Falls.
We had to do something similar, just a few years back, to get a city engineer. We had to bump, because we could not find a candidate for a city engineer, and we had to bump the salary up. And since that engineer left us, what's, two years, three years now, we haven't been able to get a city engineer.
It is difficult.
It's very difficult. You have to be able to attract people to wanna come.
It's, I wouldn't be surprised if they created a lot of people that...
Postings that come our way as well, so, I think this is a, almost a standard that we have to start, being creative and looking at, to get the top talent that we need here in our city.
You've done two things, you've done two things that are radical in terms of the way this government has approached things. Tonight will be one of them. The other was getting a standalone IT director, somebody who focuses on, on upgrading our information technology, 'cause as Councilmember Miles suggests, people ought to be able to go and look at this. I think our website needs to become, and, and we're, we are on the precipice of launching a new one, one that I think you'll all be pleased with. But we need to be able to do things like communicate just out of, from your living room, pay bills, do those things, file for a permit, do all of that stuff. It's the twenty-first century, we've gotta get there, and you guys have invested in that, and I appreciate your, your investment in this.
Agenda item number eighteen.
You know, this is another opportunity for us to continue to do what we can to assist with homelessness in our community. Not only are we doing this, but there are ongoing conversations with regard to a couple of not-for-profit organizations relative to even the creation of a little village, the, these little homes that are, are in some areas structured, but, but to try and help us help the homeless.
Agenda item number nineteen.
You know that earlier this year, we announced that there was gonna be a special program. Special program was going to include city lots that are in between two owner-occupied homes. The offer would be to those owner-occupied homes to obtain that lot. Typically, in the past, the city simply transferred the lot for a dollar amount and then said "good luck" to the homeowner. That would then result in the homeowner having to spend substantial amounts of money to do the surveying, the amalgamating, and the other, the other steps necessary to join that property to their current SBL property number. Not doing that would preclude the property owner from making certain developments on that property, because there are certain structures you can't build on a standalone lot pursuant to the zoning laws. So you'd have to first join it to your home lot, so that then you can do the things that you wanna do. What this program will attempt to do is, we're gonna take that headache away from all these homeowners. We're gonna simply say to them, "If you're interested, here's the price for the property. And by the way, if you and your, and the other property are interested, we'll even do the subdivision. We will do the subdivision, we will do the amalgamation, we will bear those costs internally, so that the transfer to the homeowner is easy."
Can we incorporate this as a policy? 'Cause, I mean, this, this is, this isn't all of the property that we have as city, right?
No, let, let me make sure that I'm, I'm clear. This is specific, this is specific to the parcel between you two as homeowners, owner-occupied homes. It won't apply to the lot that's here, that will be in the, in the surplus property auction.
Right, no, I know what you mean.
Okay.
Basically like a vacant lot that's in twenty...
Your home and my home.
Right, right.
So I guess the question is, is that, so is this all of those vacant lots?
This is all that qualifies.
Okay.
Under that category.
Okay, okay.
One of the qualifications is that the homeowners also have to be up to date on the property prices.
Yes.
So, that, there are likely other properties, but the homeowners that were next to those lots may not be up to date on, on either that, that property or another property they may own, so...
You'll see, some people have called me about a property in the downtown area. They want this, they wanna get into this program, but the city doesn't own that property yet. It's still owned by the people that had the house there and stuff, so, you know, I'm sure not every property here, but here's what I can tell you, I think this is a great initiative. And when you look at this, and if I did my math right, if, if everything is voted through on the property exchange and moving this property, eighty-two city properties we will have moved to developers, to the opportunity for homeowners to improve their lifestyle, to have a, a piece of property next door to them that they wanna build a garage on, put a pool on, that's gonna make a lot of homeowners happy and take pride in that area. So, I think some of these agenda items tonight, since I've been on the council, it's very, very exciting to see the properties that the city owned move them to some other hands.
The other thing I will say, so that in the spirit of transparency, when you do this with these properties, once you join them to the SBL of your home, there will be a slight uptick in your property tax. I don't want anybody to think that that's not gonna happen, that will happen, but it's vacant land being added, so it isn't as though you're, you're adding improved property to your property.
Agenda item number twenty.
This goes, I think, to a comment perhaps that one of the council members may have said earlier. You realize that back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the prior administration entered into an agreement for the operation of the golf course. At the time they did that, they did not have a negotiated settlement, or they didn't negotiate the transfer of Parks and Public Works work to the private operator. As a consequence, a grievance had been filed, and that grievance had been rolling around for a long time, resulted in a, in a, in a filing with the Public Employee Board. What we have been able to do is enter into a discussion with the United Steelworkers, and as you can see in the agreement, to the point of layoffs or, or cuts to the steelworkers, part of our agreement is that, that none of that's gonna happen for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Quite frankly, I would never suggest that to, to, to this council. I think that, I think all of our departments are twenty-five percent light, based upon the cut that happened in twenty nineteen. I think the men and women that are working here are working very hard. There are people in the community who maybe think they don't work hard enough, but I'm telling you, you know, that cut in personnel did not result in less roads to be taken care of, less parks to be taken care of. And, and with your cooperation in the transfer of some of these properties, and then ultimately with the surplus property sale, we're also gonna get rid of some of the properties we've had, we've had to maintain for all these... we're also going to get rid of some of the properties we've had, we've had to maintain for all these years. So this agreement retroactively addresses what wasn't done in 2018 or 19, settles this, this dispute with the steelworkers, and also acknowledges that in the event the current operator is no longer the operator, the administration would agree that they need to negotiate with the steelworkers going forward. So what this does is it takes care of what was done and keeps us in that same lane.
As a person that followed this very much, the previous administration really did not speak with the steelworkers before leasing out the course. And I think there was a last communication there. I think this document gives a little more communication of how we're moving forward. And I want to make it clear that I, I do believe leasing the golf course or privatizing it is in the best interest for the city. When it was ran by a fully unionized operators and workers, the city was losing up to $300,000 a year. I think it was a burden on the taxpayers. As we move forward, whether it's with the current operators or in the future, I think we always have to look at this as operating as a semi-private course with a non-unionized workforce in order to make it as successful. And I make that statement. And I'll be, I will be abstaining from this. I have a family member that's in Niagara Golf Partners, so I will be abstaining from this.
Agenda item number 21.
Yeah, could I just start off with a comment here? So due to a relative involvement with the, with the agreement set forth, I am going to recuse myself from discussion and from voting on this particular topic or agenda item.
Thank you, councilman. Council chair, you know that as many struggle in the post-COVID world as well as with the normal challenges of everyday life, this resource, this employee assistance program is a valuable resource that we need to provide for our employees.
Agenda item number 23. Twenty, 22, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, this has been an ongoing relationship since the beginning of the Culinary Institute. A couple of council members had asked questions about this. The numbers that you see in there, you'll see 50 parking permits, 40 per permit. Those, that is what will happen in the summer months, June, July, and August. That's just to demarcate what will happen in those months when there isn't a school semester. During the school semester, there is, there will be, the numbers will be higher because it'll be, it'll depend upon usage, right? And so the agreement addresses the fall, spring, but also now addresses June, July, and August. And that's in part because the city has insisted that the Culinary Institute be open during the summer. I know that it is student driven, but if you're coming out of the state park and it's the end of June and you'd like to go with your guests to a place to have lunch or dinner, that's the closest place and it had been closed each and every summer because the students were gone. But for the first time this summer, after our, our insistence, it's open. And now you'll see, that's why we're entering into an agreement for it to be open.
I'm in that ramp three times a week now, every week.
I tell you, that ramp's never looked better. Never looked better. It's well lit, it's clean, the staff is fantastic if you need them when you can't figure out how to use your car to get out. There, it's a good, good place we have over there right now. And it was always the subject of a lot of complaints. But it's, it's very clean, very well lit. I think we did a really good job turning that ramp around.
Agenda item number 23.
Remember when we did the road repair on 7th Street, there was a difficulty with an outside vendor relative to trying to get some of the sewer work done. That resulted in the road defect that resulted in this damage.
Agenda item number 24 has been moved onto number one.
To let everybody know who, for those of you who may not know, and I'm quite sure it's only a handful of people who Marshall McWilson really is. She's probably, and I've been a musician over 25, 26 years. She's probably one of the most hardworking individuals that you will ever run into when it comes down to what she does. I would hope, and especially, you know, and I'm very thankful that we, you know, named this day the Marshall McWilson Day. I'm hoping that we begin to kind of wrap our arms around more of our local talent that's around here. Because we do find ourselves during the summer months, spending money on outside entertainment acts when we have talent right in the middle of our city that is stellar, second to none. Like for a blues fest or something, for like Queen of Blues, I would say that for her. And I, and so I'm hoping that at some point, once we begin to ramp up and we begin to start getting into the, you know, the, the season of live music and we're back outside, that we begin to, and I'm saying this in, as a musician, as a homegrown Niagara Falls musician. I've played whether people have been married or buried, I've been around, I've been, I've been in the tour band for, across the country for over two years. I understand the grind and what it takes to be an artist. And she's, this is well overdue and she's very much deserving of this honor.
Thank you. Agenda item number 25.
Mr. Chairman, I have discussed with you the projects relative to the Restore New York Communities Grant Initiative. As I indicated with regard to the project proposed by Power City Landmark, it, even in the eyes of Empire State Development, checked the appropriate boxes relative to the neighborhood improvement, community and neighborhood improvement. So it's our belief that this project will appropriately address, begin to address some of the issues we have in the South End relative to infill of neighborhoods, creation of community. And, and it's, it's the reason why we proposed this to the council tonight.
Agenda item number 26.
With regard to this item, I believe that the council has received all of the appropriate information relative to current cost of the contract together with the revenue generated by this fee. And obviously, as you know, pursuant to the charter, it is your determination on, on the level of that fee. So you, you clearly have whatever additional independent access to the controller's office should you need some more information. But as is required, we need to make sure that we've got this fee set prior to putting forward a full and, a full and final city budget.
Agenda item number 27.
I know that we had some folks come to the microphone to speak with regard to these items. Item 27 clears the way for you to tackle items 28 and 29. So I just think that in so many ways, this council's being asked to sort of catch up. Things that have been neglected for a lot of years, that has really resulted in, in some of the neighborhood conditions that we have. Be mindful of the fact that, I don't care how many laws we propose and how many laws you pass, we're also thinking about enforcement because enforcement's the key to all of these things.
Because I just want to make sure that, like one of the speakers earlier had mentioned gun laws where if you, you, you could take those who actually have been, you know, went through the process to get their permit and do everything the right way. And then all of a sudden you tie their hands behind their back and say, you can't do this because we got too many guns in the street. Where of course, you know, those people who carry illegally could care less about any new laws that may come forward. Where those who are, you know, law abiding and they went about it the right way, you know, kind of like get more of the pressure put on them. I'm just, I just want to make sure that there is a way, because I do agree with the fact that we do have slum tenants. I, I agree. But I also agree that we have slum lords as well. So I understand that there is some, that something has to be done. I just want to make sure, like you said, Mayor, that we begin to address the, the enforcement of it. Because we, if we're going to put a tax and we're going to have, you know, those people, you know, who are, are landlords to pay an extra fee and to put, take more money out of their pockets, where those people who are not really doing their job or they're the bad players, they're not going to care. They're going to continue to do, so I, and then when you have those, you know, one of those people who are tearing holes into the walls. So I'm, I'm just personal. My dad had a tenant one time, of course her name will remain nameless. But it took him four years, uh, four years, I'm sorry, four months after she stopped paying rent to get her out of the apartment. So our thing is, is how do we support these good landlords when they need to get rid of someone who is actually being a, a slum tenant? So I, so I, I think I'm, I'm a liber, I'm about balance. So I'm okay, I understand. You know, we have both. So listen, I want to make sure that in this, it's, it, it begins to protect those who are actually doing what they, doing what they're supposed to do.
I'm sure you're very well aware of this, but a lot of them rules to keep a tenant in that long, state, not us. We can't supersede what the state has done and we can't. But I will say that in these ordinances, it gives us what people have been asking us for. This is going to put more bodies on the street doing the code enforcement job. It puts in stuff that penalizes the bad players. We have mechanisms that we've never had before that we can take and shut them down. And that's what we need to do. That's what we need to do. We have to get rid of the bad players so that the good landlords, you know, can have a much easier route of it. And this isn't, we're not asking for much. The one lady spoke up here earlier about the landlord registration fee. That's going away. That, I, I paid that fee and it was the stupidest fee I had ever seen. I, I paid $25 every two years for, I still don't know what for. Now we're going to have, it's going to be a licensing, you're going to have to maintain certain standards, you're going to have to do certain thing. This, probably not perfect because nothing is, but it's worked well in other municipalities. Oh my God, I can't tell you how long I've been working on this with, I, I talked to you guys all before we were elected about this here, that this is going. I think this is a fantastic start. I'm thankful for the administration to supporting it. I'm thankful for the law department for finally getting it done. But I think that you're going to find that this is addresses an awful lot of every question that you're asking here. As far as slum tenants go, well, I've had them. I've had it destroyed pretty bad. New York State kind of dictates that more than anybody.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to be sure, you know, nothing that we'll do with any of these statutes is going to deprive people of their right to confront. So, you know, there's a court process that will go on with all of these things. None of this, I, I just don't, I don't want anyone listening, nor do I want the council members to think that any of this stuff is strict liability. Yes, there will be citations. Yes, there will be the hauling into court, but you're, but court's going to be a part of this, a part of this process. So in many instances, we're going to need to make sure that when we go into court with a case, that we're responsible, ready, and able to prove our case. And then in that instance, it obviously will be up then to the court to provide the appropriate penalty. But what this does is it, it arms our code enforcement office with, I think, additional tools that allows them to do some things for those actors that, that really have just been, just been sort of hiding in the shadow. And with regard to bad tenants, you know, that's going to, that's always going to be a difficult case post-COVID. So landlords, and I've represented many of them, complain about how there was this massive protection for just bad actors on, on the tenant side. We'll still struggle with that. But that's not going to be our struggle. That's going to be the struggle of landlords. And, and because we don't have, we don't have a role to play in that. The only role we would play in that is obviously if they're committing a crime. Then in that instance, you know, we would get involved in the tenant piece.
On this, I think this is a great, great, great ordinance we're putting, you know, forward. And it answers the call of a lot of the, our, you know, community residents who've come up to that podium and spoke to us about the need for this. So thank you.
And I have to say, I, I, when Kenny first presented this, and I know he's been working on it for years, I thought putting on this agenda this day was too quick. Okay, I thought we were moving too quickly. But after speaking with him and after speaking to a number of people in the community, some landlords and property, and believe me, not everyone's for this. And I understand that, but in a half hour conversation I had with Kenny before this meeting, I think people have to understand the work that's gone into this, the comparable, comparing this law to, to other municipalities that you did the research on. Can this be tweaked? I've already looked at a couple of suggestions from people. Yeah, it probably can be. What we do is we reevaluate in six months, a year from now and see what we can improve upon. But one of the things that, that I like that this ordinance has, and again, there's 1142.17 tenant accountability. It talks about tenant accountability and what it should be. So one of the concerns of one of the landlords was, well, I can't, the tenants, what if they break this, break that? Well, there's a section in here that if you document that and our code enforcement officer goes in there and they find that it's not your fault, you know, we are going to consider that. So I think this is a good ordinance and, and I do thank you Ken for the work on this. And Mr. Major, thank you.
Agenda item number 28.
29.
Agenda item number 29.
Item number 29 is sort of ancillary to what you've just discussed. Often, as has been discussed by several council members, many times we have out of town property owners. And these out of town property owners end up acquiring the services of property managers. And all too often, property managers end up also being sort of shadowy in, not all, but some. And so what we hope in this particular piece of legislation is to sort of bring some order, at least with regard to that particular category of property ownership and management.
More of an example. So for instance, like the property owner from out of town owns a property here in the city of Niagara Falls and that property has no property manager or no landlord or no one to take care of the property and the city boards it up. How would this address those landlords?
That, those landlords would be addressed a whole different way. This, this addresses. This is property managers. This addresses the property manager who the out of town landlord would use. Even an in-town landlord sometimes wants to use a property manager instead of their own services, right? But to, for those property owners who are out of towners, who don't really give a damn about the property and don't care about the tenants and don't care about anything, so that the property ends up getting condemned and boarded up, there's a different place for them to deal with. And we've already been dealing with a couple of them through the attorney general's office. So we try to use the full complement of tools to address those kinds of properties.
And one last thing about 28 and 29. One of the things that I was concerned about is enforcement and I was not going to even consider passing any laws that we can enforce. And speaking to the administration, a few of my colleagues, there's no doubt we need to have the resources to enforce these ordinances. And we will be approving a budget that will have those resources to ensure that this ordinance is fol, is followed up on and people are held accountable. So I think that's important that we're all on the same page with that.
Agenda item number 30.
Item number 30, you're all familiar with, those who may be new to the council, there is an intermunicipal agreement that allows for various government agencies throughout the county to engage in this kind of conduct where equipment or, or items of, of need can be transferred in between the various government units. We were, we were advised by one of our county legislators of the availability of a surplus vehicle. This surplus vehicle, as you look at it, while it's not brand spanking new and it has its own set of mileage on it, the mileage was really being utilized not by the sheriff's office in a pursuit vehicle. So it was more a vehicle So, it was more a vehicle that was being used for, for a variety of other, either community-based or other types of activities. Uh, they no longer have use for it. It will improve, um, the vehicle use of one of our, I believe, a fire prevention, um, chief. And so, we're taking a vehicle out of our fleet that is, that's probably close to fifteen years old, and we're gonna put in a vehicle that will at least provide us with some additional, um, years of service.
Agenda item number thirty-one?
You may recall that, um, earlier in, toward the end of last year, you approved a series of American Rescue Plan funds for the upgrade of a number of pieces of equipment in the police department. Uh, that covered, um, the department members in patrol activities. This additional, um, funding is now going to provide, uh, equipment for first-line supervisory personnel. So, they will also be equipped in the same way as the patrol, um, entities were equipped when you approved that, that, uh, funding in December of last year.
Agenda item number thirty-two?
Organization in the fire department. These are opportunities always for us to take a look at what we're doing as a government structure, modernize it for efficiencies, get more appropriate personnel where it needs to be. This is another one of those modifications.
Agenda item number thirty-three?
Lastly, on this agenda item, again, we're talking about, um, some road defects that were in place as a result of some of the work that was being done. Um, this resulted in a minor, um, damage. Um, and so, this claim's being presented to you for this evening.
You've shared a lot of agenda items, it's appreciated. Um, I'd like to make a motion to have a discussion about taking a five-minute break right now or before public speaking. Um, we could take a, I have to take a break at some point. Um, nature's calling. I could probably make it through the voting, but it's up to you guys. Do you wanna take a five-minute break now or before? Or go through the voting? Okay, I make a motion to take a five-minute break now.
Second. Don't want them turning yellow.
You still got a vote on it? Still got a vote. Five-minute break. Okay, thank you for the public. I know this has been a long meeting. We appreciate you, um, listening to our discussions on the agenda items and getting a little better knowledge of them before we vote, so.
Agenda item number one, city clerks' report for the month of August twenty-twenty-two received and filed. Agenda item number two, approval of the contract for Porter Road Bridge Expansion Joint Replacement Project Design Services to Gearman Peterson Incorporated. Councilmember number, member Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak? Council Chairman Spanbauer? Item has been approved. Item number three, approval of the contract to FM Communications Incorporated for upfitting for one twenty-twenty-two Blue Ford Utility Police Interceptor. Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins? Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Item has been approved. Item number four, approval of the contract with Buffalo Niagara Waterkeeper Ecological Restoration Project?
Move it, call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Duck Island. And I failed to mention in my comments on the agenda item, Duck Island will be a separate and future, um, request for appropriation because it needs some special work to it.
Item number five, approval of the micro grant program extension for Buffalo Avenue Heritage District?
Call the roll.
As amended, correction. Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Item has been approved. Approval of reimbursement for improvement to city alleyway to Platte High Niagara Incorporated? Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Item has been approved. Item number seven, approval of the contract with M.R. Incorporated for Consumer Drug Takeback Program?
Call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Item has been approved. Item number eight, approval of the contract with Orkin LLC for pest control services. Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Item has been approved. Item number nine, approval of the contract with Niagara Falls Water Board for Niagara Falls Police Department Substation?
Move it, call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Councilmembers, Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Item has been approved. Item number ten, approval of the contract to Pentera USRE for redevelopment of five-fifty Main Street Niagara Water Lusting Incorporated?
Move it, call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Item has been approved. Item number eleven, approval of the sale of city-owned real property Niagara Falls Housing Authority?
We have that one-piece attitude.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the provision, uh, that is being requested is that in conjunction with these transfers, that the housing authority, uh, provide that these be, um, homeownership properties, uh, single-family homeownership properties.
Justment and, Mr. Mayor? Okay.
Then move it, call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Item has been approved. Approve, uh, item number twelve, approval of the sale of city-owned real property RJ Davis and Company Development? Councilmember Backs? Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number thirteen, approval of the sale of city-owned real property RJ Niagara LLC?
Call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins? Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number fourteen, approval of the sale of real property by City of Niagara Falls Niagara Wanderlusting Incorporated, five-fifty Main Street?
Move it, call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Approval of the transfer of city-owned properties to Niagara Orleans Regional Land Improvement Corporation, Norlick Land Bank, twenty-nine, twenty-nine zero-one Grand Avenue, two thirty-one Seventy Street, five thirty Eighteenth Street, thirteen thirty-one Willow Avenue, eleven twenty-nine Niagara Avenue.
Move it, call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number, agenda item number sixteen, approval of reorganization in the fire department clerico?
Call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number seventeen, approval of budget amendment in the Department of Economic Development increase in director's pay?
Call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
In the event that we do that, I just want to make sure that within the next six, within six months or two, maybe eight months or whatever, the timeframe, make sure that we're actually checking in and evaluating the progress of this position because it's a lot of money. But, uh, for right now, I'll say yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Approve, uh-
Well, I respect what the council member said. Six or eight months of a person coming into a new job is about as unfair a measuring stick as one could imagine. Um, I, I agree that there needs to be assessment and evaluation, but establishing an artificial timeframe-
I think it has to be at least a year.
And then you give- And it's about a focus. So, it's not about things actually happening. It's not about, are they gonna change the city of Niagara Falls in six months? I'm not, I'm not oblivious to that. What I'm saying is, is where is the focus at? You know, at some point, you know, you're making that money. We need to make sure that the game plan is actually within the realm of, you know, moving our city forward. So, it's not, yeah, that, that, I'm not talking about a six-month of him or her, um, changing the city. I'm saying just their focus and see where they are.
Well, remember, the focus has already been announced to you. If you become a member of this administration, this administration's focused on local improvement, improving the local experience in our community, making Niagara Falls develop.
Agenda item number eighteen, approval of neighborhood legal ESG grant extension?
Call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Uh, agenda item number nineteen, amendment, approval of transfer of city-owned properties, property purchase program?
Call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty, approval of settlement agreement between the city and United Steelworkers Local ninety-four thirty-four?
Move it, call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
And again, I'll be abstaining, um, from this because I have a family member that's involved in the current lease operations at the golf course.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-three, approval of the contract with- Okay, wait a minute, I gotta come back here. Um, twenty? This is one I, yes. Mm-hmm, oh, I'm sorry. Um, item number twenty-one, approval of the contract with North Point Council Incorporated Employee Assistance Program?
Call the roll.
Um, Councilmember Backs?
I have recused from, yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Agenda item number twenty-two, approval of the parking agreement with, um, Niagara Community College Rainbow Parking Ramp?
Call the roll.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Correction, Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-three, approval to settle rental cost claim of Progressive Insurance Company, ASO, Jackalina Rivers, and the amount of six hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty cent.
Move it, call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-four, relative to, oh, we already did that number twenty. That's, she was moved to number one. Item number twenty-five, relative to restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program application? Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number 26, relative to scheduling a public hearing relative to an estate of the amount necessary to pay the expenses for the recycling and refu, refuse program for fiscal year 2023? Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number 27, relative to amending chapter 11137 of the Codify Ordinances entitled Landlord Rental and Property Owner Registration?
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
For the next three, I just want to definitely make sure that we're really staying on top of it when it comes down to, you know, enforcement. So I'll say yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number 28, relative to adding chapter 1142 of the Codify Ordinances entitled Rental Dwelling Unit Registration?
Call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number 29, relative to adding chapter 1143 of the Codify Ordinances entitled Property Management Registration? Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number 30, intermunicipal agreement with the County of Niagara Transfer a Vehicle to the Niagara Falls Fire Department?
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number 31, supplemental agreement to purchase hardware, software, web services, Axon Enterprises Incorporated, body cameras, tasers, virtual reality training Niagara Falls Police Department?
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number 32, reorganization in Finance Department Billing and Collection?
Roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number 33, request for approval to settle and pay property damage claim of Patricia Gibbons?
Call the roll.
Councilmember Backs?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved.
And a lot of different changes. I appreciate the whole administrative table here for your help tonight.
Thank you.
So now we'll go to the speakers for the good of the community.
Speaker number one, Dana Meisenhauer.
And I live on 76th Street. And I'm following up from last month when I came to talk about the negative impacts that the Little League football was having on the neighborhood. And I think people come here a lot and complain. And I wanted to come and say thank you to Councilperson Spanbauer because he followed up. I won't say everything's perfect yet, but you are a man of your word. You did take an interest in this. You followed up. You've got Verizon to put a sign up saying no trespassing on the property. You did talk to Superintendent Lori, and he did confirm that there were a lot more complaints than you heard just from me. It's taken a little while. Things are not perfect yet, but I think we're moving in a positive direction. The problem is, and I wondered when I kind of evaluated the situation, did I kind of go into the situation with rose-colored glasses looking at the location of my house? And I don't think people were really using that Verizon field for recreation before they put that turf stadium in behind the LaSalle Middle School. Because when they did that, it made it obviously the home for the Little League. And it also took all the other recreational space for the school away from people in the neighborhood. So even though the league is not using the Verizon property and my, my house is the end zone anymore, kids who want to just come and throw a ball around, when they come and the school field is occupied, even though there's a sign there, they still come to the Verizon property. Now, when I went to church, it was, it was a home game on Sunday. When I went to church, I still had to shoot people that were smoking out of my driveway and stuff like that. So the league at least is not pelting my house with footballs anymore. Still have some kids playing over there. If we could handle that, it would be great. And I still have people from the league. I honestly believe it's just a case, listen, we want the league to grow and have spectators. I think it might just be a case where it's a poor fit for the location, and maybe it should be reevaluated going forward. So I do appreciate your help, sir. And since it is October, I've got a question for everybody. How do you fix a broken jack-o'-lantern? With a pumpkin patch? Peace out.
So you know, I want you to know that I drove by Sunday, and I believe we had someone from the administration drive by either this past week or the week before. So we've looked at the location. There is a lot of activity there, a lot of activity. And what I would recommend to you right now, if you don't have the legs of number of the president, I would think get that number. And if you need help getting it, I can get it for you. But calls about people being on your lawn and smoking or littering, I think that's got to be communicated to the league president. That's where you start with and go from there, you know? Okay, but, but thank you for coming.
All right, thank you, sir. Thanks, everybody.
John Cooper. Good evening, Council. John Cooper from the Niagara Gospel Mission, also a resident in Niagara Falls. I wanted to first off thank the mayor and the councilmen that came to our ribbon cutting for the veteran suite. Really appreciate you guys coming out. And those of you who weren't able to make it, I, the offer still stands that we are open all the time for visits and tours. So you guys are more than welcome. And those who came, you're welcome to come again for another tour if you'd like. But what I wanted to address besides just thanking you guys is the weather's obviously getting colder, which means our business is going to pick up. And we just got done redoing our, we had a leak in the roof in our, in our gym. So we just got done fixing that so that way we can use it as a code blue. So code blue, for those of you who don't know, is when it's under 32 degrees. Kind of any regulation of getting them in a bed goes away because we just need to get them in the shelter. So our gym, which still has some repairs that need to be done on the inside, it is now usable for code blue. Where last year we were using our chapel where you could get maybe 30 in, but now we can probably fit, I want to say around 100 to 120 people for code blue, which would be really good. So my just, my encouragement to you guys is as you're going out, if you know anyone who knows someone who's going to be in that situation or knows someone yourself who's going to be in that situation this winter, please direct them to us. When they come to us, we'll give them dinner the night before if they come in, in time. And then when dinner's being served, and then we'll give them breakfast when they wake up, and they'll have a warm place to stay. So we want as many people who are needy in our building for any of the services we offer because, again, we believe the, the gospel of Jesus Christ is what changes lives. So when they're in our building, that's, that is what they're going to hear unashamedly. But we're going to give them a warm meal and a warm belly and a place to sleep as well. So thank you for your time.
I definitely, I used to do street outreach, and I do know exactly like all of the good work that you guys do. And if anybody could, please go and check out the veteran portion of there. It's amazing. It's, it's beautiful. So thank you again for what you do.
Jeff Flack?
Good evening, Council. I'm coming to speak on the topic of environmental conservation. Generally, our city doesn't live up to the majesty of our geography. We've heard that kind of mentioned and alluded to in some of the presentations today, some of the different comments on economic development. And we have to ask ourselves why we don't. I believe it's because we don't have a culture of conservation within our community, and that has to change before we can start extracting those tourists out of the park and pulling them down the gorge, pulling them to the second largest city park in all of New York State. We, the people, have to understand conservation. We have to be able to communicate the millions of dollars of conservation efforts that's happened. First, we have to appreciate it. My grandfather and great-grandfather, in their childhoods, growing up here in Niagara County regularly saw bald eagles. I get a little teary-eyed at the fact that I didn't see one until I was 49 years old. I'm happy to report I saw one this morning, and I have seen them regularly over the last couple of years. That shows you conservation does work. But how many of our city residents know that these are back? I also note, or how do we get there? I note that in the city charter, paragraph 3.20, which is the council's section of the city charter, directs a conservation advisory council. But does this exist? I mean, by charter, it must. Does it meet? Obviously, there's rhetorical questions. Can any council member name a single member, past or present? Can you think of things that you would like advice on that such a body would be able to research for you? Perhaps rat problems? Can you imagine the economic growth that could stem from a vigorous enhancement of our natural environment? And the education to follow from that? Can you imagine the improved quality of life we, the residents, could enjoy from such vigorous efforts? So as stated in the city charter, the preservation and improvement of the quality of the natural and man-made environment with this, within the city of Niagara Falls, in the face of population change, urbanization, and technological evolution with their accompanying demands on natural resources, are found to be of increasing and vital importance to the health, welfare, and economic well-being of present and future inhabitants, and require the foresight or forthright action of the city of Niagara Falls. So for the good of the community, I just ask you guys to revisit this important topic enshrined in this important civic document, our city charter, and reinvigorate that body and use it to the benefit and well-being of the community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Smith. I live at 1899 Niagara Avenue, 22nd. My whole big thing is, the main thing is the roads, basically in the black neighborhoods. Gentification is 100% for the last five, six years. Everyone knows it. It's always been in Niagara Falls, and injustice to blacks has always been ridiculous. 2014, 15, I dated a girl close to 19th National, and it wasn't that bad. It, it's horrendous now. The demonic colonizers put guns and drugs, obviously in cans in 19th National, criminalize blacks. Little kids got them. Colonizers need to stop this criminalize blacks. Hired many black and women to help gentify the downtown falls. LaSalle town Niagara, only oppresses downtown Niagara Falls with all the stores LaSalle to town are cheaper, better products because it's mostly white. Downtown has character because of the horrible treatment you give us. Save-A-Lot, Dollar Tree, Tops, Rite Aid, Walgreens, all better to help white people. These roads, always bad, but the falls started finally building up the falls down in the invited border. And want us, many blacks gone as, as much as possible. Paid Middle Eastern, Middle Easterns here all over now. They live here to replace blacks. 13th Street was disgusting, right there in the center of Linwood. And it's like they paved it. And I was up and down riding and taping, videotaping, but you guys don't care because you guys don't live on these streets. You don't have to deal with this destroying. Broke my axle, collapsed my car four times. But it dug up, and it's like, uh, and you paved, I don't even understand. But then, you know what? I got it fixed. But then you go, say, go on 7-Eleven on 15th Street, and it's sewage water. You're making our city look like the worst in the world, but you're intentionally doing it. You guys, nobody cares. But you know, I even, you know, even had a cop car in front of Fortuna's and 19th recording black people because it's, you know, you got people on top of the tower. That's just the most disgusting thing ever. But nobody, you know, this is up to you guys to fix. Dug up the road, everything's been going on, so right in front of my house four years ago, it's like nine months. Just leaves it all, just screwed up, destroyed. You know, you guys ain't going to fix my car and do anything like this and that. 12th and 14th by Niagara Street, which has no houses, was dug up immediately fixed back in June. But yet then you had LaSalle, Michigan, and all these other streets over on our side just completely destroyed. It's like, boom, 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 boom. It's nonstop destroying the car's axle, the, the tie rods, the alignment. They did 22nd, you know, like whatever. But also dug up the water, digging up water pipes throughout the city, especially Linwood from like 22nd down to High Park. It's just they've been doing that and just, just sitting in the holes, doing nothing. I'm watching them. It's like, they're going up and down. Now they're back to 22nd, then they're at 24th, then they're at 27th, then they're at 27th, then they're, you know, it's just everywhere, Linwood. And then you have perfect sidewalks on Linwood, and then throughout 24th is like even worse than 22nd and 18th. Well, like it's, it's applied, it's like, it's not so bad. But the sidewalks are tremendously horribly. They dug up 27th Street in Welch, where my mom lived, where my car axle broke. And I'm watching these people, these, these city workers, just sitting on their phones. They kick feet, I have it recorded, believe that. I have it recorded. I'm doing nothing. They're getting paid as the worst human beings on life. They're destroying our city, destroying our, it's, paho after paho. There's little paho's, but it's humongous when drama tape it all because they're intentionally doing this. 20th, 21st Street, right there on Pine, it's like these pipes sticking out, there's for, for six months. Like, it's like disgusting. Then they leave patches just wide open, just, here, whoa, 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 whoa. No, it's intentionally done. It's intentionally done. Because that's, Twentieth Street is, is a highly black neighborhood. After paving Third, or say, I just saw, even if it's twenty-thirtieth Street, a huge sinkhole, it's like, goes like that far. And the Twenty-ninth is just as bad. LaSalle, Michigan, quarter fixed. And Thirteenth or Fifteenth is like, um, just horrendous. These, these, these humongous little potholes will destroy any axle instantly, but that needs to be done. Destroying our car bikes, Cleveland Avenue, I just saw, like, even today, these, this patch, oh my God, it's like horrendous. But it's like, it's like, these roads aren't just, it's intentionally done. I don't know how they're all doing the things that they do, but like, it's, even the Five G Tower on Eighteenth Street immediately needs to be taken down, because that's only gonna give us cancer like the Love Canal. You know, that definitely needs to be taken out because I have it videotaped when they're illegally putting it up. And I have video on it when it is illegally being put up, because that's only gonna give us all cancer.
I had called like about three months ago, the corner at Thirteenth and East Falls. No stop sign, no nothing. I travel down there all the time. So I don't get T-boned or get killed. I called the number. They said they don't do a ticket number. Nothing ever happened. And also, with the price of the water bill in the city of Niagara Falls, Towne Niagara's cheaper, Lewiston's cheaper. If y'all would trim some of the fat off the offices on Buffalo Avenue, everybody's water bill would be, go down a little lower. And also with the garbage fee, since y'all getting the casino revenue, I believe the taxpayer should get a piece, a piece of that body too. Because my water bill went up from like one fifty-three to two something now. There's only three people in the house. I checked for leaks and everything. I think that's unfair to the taxpayer, that y'all using the casino revenue to fund private, private companies with extra jobs and stuff. But we all live here in the city. I try to do a lot of extra for my daughter. I work numerous jobs. A lot of people probably, probably don't know me in the city. I was dough, dough boy. And, um, gotta be a little bit more business friendly because I love doing business in Buffalo. Niagara Falls is okay, but gotta a little bit be more business friendly. Thank you.
Here we go.
Well, I agree with the gentleman just before me as far as the water bill. The water bill has increased to the point where literally they're gouging the consumer here, living in Niagara Falls. And the water quality is severely diminished. I'm dealing with double and triple billing on my water bill. I hope to talk to, uh, Dan over here, see if there's any resolution about my personal billing problems. The way the billing is structured is completely illegal. I can say that as a fact. I've went to college. I've gone to small business training seminars and other such at various colleges and emporiums. Also dealing with New York State tax and federal taxation. What's legal? What's illegal? Interest rate on the water bill is illegal, the way it's structured. Oh, you can sometimes pay here, sometimes pay over there, sometimes pay at the city. And there's no communication. Bills get lost, and I'm dou, I paid the double bills. I paid the triple bills, but now they're doing it to me for the third time. It's not gonna watch. Okay? I'm standing my ground on it. But they're gouging everyone in Niagara Falls for that amount of money. Thirty years ago, a quarter water bill was six dollars per quarter. Okay? I thought that they would actually stop when they reached a hundred dollars per quarter. No, they're up to a hundred and thirty dollars minimum for thirteen units. And I actually use two or three per quarter. How come I'm not charged for two or three? I'm charged for thirteen. It is outrageous. And we're gonna go back to agenda item number nine. Okay. I was at a water board meeting last week. No, I take that back, Monday. And I asked everybody, why do you have a pile of rocks over there? Oh, well, they're gonna build a new building. Well, now I find out it's for Niagara Falls Police Department Substation. And I want every council member to seriously reconsider rescinding their vote on this topic. And I'm gonna be very specific why. Is that waste. They're spending our money like crazy. Do we need another substation? Okay? No. Not necessary. We got a huge police station and courtroom system on Main Street. They destroyed numerous historical buildings to build this infrastructure. Okay? And the basement is cracking. The cells don't lock. The billing was developed by an irresponsible contractor. Unnecessary. There's nothing wrong with the original public safety building. They need a substation, put it in the center of the city. And they also had a substation right at the convention center. Small substation for police. What happened to that? Is it still there? I don't know. What about the police station, the antique historical police station that the city could have set up as a museum right on Ontario, uh, Avenue or Street and Main Street? As soon as they built up that irresponsible train station, nobody's ever there. It's unused. I know the real reason why it was put there. But they had an old historical police station, and that was demolished. There's nothing wrong with the police station on High Park Boulevard. Why not open it up? Use that. That's why our water bills are so much.
Educational thing, I'll talk to you more after me. We're not building a new substation at all. There's no cost to the substations. So I'll talk to you on a separate note. I think you may have misread that.
Gloria Nelson.
Good evening. I'm Gloria Dawson. I live at fifteen oh two Ontario Avenue in Niagara Falls, New York. And I'm quite blessed to have the honor on behalf of the mayor, Mr. Donald here, and the city council. I am reminded that each of you was elected because you have a great interest in the city of Niagara Falls. You took an oath to pay tribute to those well-being citizens. We must encourage people to treat the city for what it truly stands for. This is the honeymoon capital of the world. I know you've heard me say this before, but it is. It is not just a place that made up of, let me see, it is not just certain places that are made up of Niagara Falls, but all of Niagara Falls make up the city. We must start holding people accountable for the way the city looks and businesses leaving. I would suggest that our city council come up with how to hold people accountable for trashing the city. And some of you stole my thunder in the first place. If you hadn't let me get up here about two hours ago, I could have told you this. We live in a beautiful city, and all should feel the same way, but not all do. And why? Because some of the people consider Niagara Falls as a dump, and that's how they refer to it. I'll give you some example. I live at fifteen oh two Ontario Avenue, and I have, my driveway is in Fifteenth Street. I have an individual that lives next door on the Fifteenth Street side. They have caused a lot of havoc. The house that they live in is boarded up, so now this is why people speak about slum landlords. And then you wonder, who would want to live in a boarded up house? Well, they must also feel the same way. They care less about their property. But why should people have to suffer for others? I can't get the car in the driveway because they blocked the driveway. The mail carrier, she decided, and I don't blame her, she's not gonna deliver mail because they have a dog. So that dog comes and make his business in our yard. Okay? The dog sits on the porch, so we have to go and get the mail from the post office. I did report this Ford enforcement, code enforcement, so I don't know who's gonna enforce, enforce the code enforcement when they have come out. Not only that, they have, um, I can't get the yard mowed. The, um, the guy who we paid to mow the yard said that he cannot because all that mess from the dog is in the yard. They tore my fence down because I tried to separate the property, and the man had the dacity to cut the fence down and moved his, um, boat up in the yard. So I really feel, how would you teach people to respect others unless they are held accountable? I don't care if it's me. You should hold people accountable. We had ventures leave the city. What a shame. So we must have more respect for our city ourselves. Oh, I can, I can tell time, praise God. But, um, I don't know what should happen. I don't wanna hold my children responsible for this young man next door. And I surely don't want him trying to punk me, telling us that we have to abide by his rules. And so I did have spoke to even the mayor concerning this. I'm not saying that he's not concerned, but again, you must hold people accountable. Niagara Falls is the honeymoon capital of the world. It's not the dump capital of the world. And if we intend for our children to have some respect for us, then we must hold people accountable because one day, they will be held accountable. I do appreciate it. I'll be back next month and see what happens. Thank you, and I do think you need the code enforcement. Hire as many as you can. Thank you. God bless.
Jacqueline. Jacqueline Ryan. Irene Lynch.
Thank you. My name is Irene Lynch. I live at nine one nine Walnut Avenue. And my complaint is regarding the traffic. Just in this past year, all of a sudden, there's like drag racing going on up and down Walnut Avenue. And they, they have these crazy mufflers on their car to make sure that it makes real loud noise. And it's really distracting. I don't know where the police are or why. They, they, they seem that, these people seem to know the police are not going to bother them. And I think they need to be, that street needs to be watched to see what is going on there. Thank you.
Chris Z.
Hi, my name is Chris Sitch. I'm resident Niagara Falls. I am the chaplain for Niagara Gospel Mission. And I've been coming here the last, I don't know, last several times and just, um, just kind of observing and whatnot and to see what you guys put in. You guys do a great job. I see you're dedicated and, um, so keep going at it. It's hard, and you guys put in the hours and whatnot, and obviously you care for the city. As I said, I'm the chaplain for the, uh, the Gospel Mission. And some of the things that I do there is I work with the men one-on-one, and I work in group settings with guys. And one of the things we do is a discipleship program on the second floor. We're inducing people to the Lord, and we're trying to help people in their next steps, whatever that is, for their life. And, um, and then I work a recovery class. Now, recovery classes are put in place to help guys that are struggling with various addictions to drugs and alcohol and whatnot. And I started there a year ago as the chaplain. And what I didn't realize, I did city ministry before in Buffalo. But here, coming now, the, the rabbit hole goes deep, is what I'm saying, is the issue with how addicted these men are to drugs and the kinds of drugs that they're doing. It's, I, I, it's probably close to eighty percent of the guys that come in there on the, on the overnight thirty-day room that we have with, uh, shelter for them. Well, they're addicted to some kind of substance. That's eighty percent. And that's like thirty percent really struggle with mental health crises. And we just try to help them the best that we can because, well, we care. And I've been in that situation myself where I've been in a deep hole, and the Lord pulled me out and helped me then. I said, I'm gonna go out, I'm gonna help guys as much as I can in the city. I asked one of the guys that lives in the Robor Towers, right down the road there across from Niagara Street, how, how the drug problem was there. It's rampant. I go, well, how many people you think are using there in those towers? And what, what's going on there? Said about ninety percent. And then you got those other towers, as John was saying, the Niagara Towers and the other one down there. I reckon it's the same there. And the kinds of drugs, when I say drugs, I'm talking about, you go on YouTube and you do a little deep dive in what fentanyl is and the fentanyl crisis that exists in this country. It's here in the falls. It's everywhere. This drug is fifty times more powerful than heroin, they say. Now, heroin's powerful. I've never did it. But from what I hear guys telling me, and then this drug, fentanyl, is that much more powerful. You see, I'm walking zombies. And, you know, I, I, I get passionate about it because, unless the heart of this city is reached, one by one, people, the infrastructure can be built up, businesses can be built up, sorta, but who's gonna run them? Who's gonna get the stuff done? There's a dark cloud that's hanging over Niagara Falls. And I'm praying that the light of the gospel of Jesus Christ shines and breaks through. And we need places like Niagara Gospel Mission. We've been there seven years. And, um, many, um, missions and whatnot or volunteer organizations are struggling because of COVID. You know, everything was closed down, and so donations go down and whatnot. Thank you. So anyway, that's part of what we do is try to help these men offer these. And, and, and there's no way we can do that on stuff we go after one-on-one. We have to understand. I just think there's a deeper problem if we don't reach the heart of these people. You know, they're homeless because they run out of relationships, not resources. And I go, and I used to go to Horizon myself, and then to hear about the Trout Center, Trout Center, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, but the success rate for somebody coming through there is not very high. It's like a turnaround. It's a severe problem here, but praise God, we're there, we're doing the work, and thank you for your support and, um, uh, just for, uh, just for hearing us. Just appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
The general public for being here for this long, especially the people who stayed around for the good of the community to, to speak their words. I think we've been here long enough. Any, any last comments by any council members?
I just really wanna, um, second what Ms. Dawson was saying. When it comes down to, like, I have, I, I've been fighting the property next door to me for over, going on three years. It's been boarded up. I've had squatters. I've had heroin addicts. Again, waking my daughter up at three, four o'clock in the morning screaming. Those type of issues are dealing with enforcement. And so we definitely, um, need to kind of find a way to step our game up in that area. I'd like to welcome the administration back to our meetings. Um, I'm hoping that we all, as a collective unit, come together, one people, again, I said this in the very first day I got here, well, at least one of the first meetings, is that, you know, we really need to start embracing and, and really soaking in a lot of the words that come from that podium, because that podium is important. Because these are the people that they're paying taxes, they live here, they, they stick around even because, you know, Niagara Falls was a natural wonder of the world, and now it's considered a forgotten natural wonder of the world. You can look it up. It's Google-able. So let's make sure that if we want our city to be a better version of itself, at the end of the day, we need to come step, step it up. Make sure that whatever the laws that we do have in place. Oh, and one more thing, because we do this a lot, and I just wanna make sure that I say this before we leave. Because I notice we say a lot of things are state problems. I wanna make something really clear. I think that if the governing body, and I'm not talking about just the administration, I'm not talking about just city council, I'm talking about county legislator. I'm talking about state, our state representatives from, you know, our Congress. All of the people that say that they represent us here, you know, when they're campaigning and they're here giving cards and they're, you know, photo opping and whatnot. Let's make sure that we charge them to actually come together because I promise you, if our governing body as a whole decided to come together and go to Albany and say, you know what, we are the representation of Niagara Falls, instead of us just saying, you know, this is a state problem. We just have to deal with it like we've been doing for a long time. I think we could actually get some things done and some things changed in legislation from the state perspective to say, hey, we're not New York City. We need you to tweak some things, such as the bail reform, such as other things that we have problems with here. I think if we actually came together, whether we put all of our differences aside, and we come together and we actually make a move. we come together and we actually make a move, because right now, when it comes down to state, I feel like we're playing checkers, and they're playing chess. So I, I just, that's something I just hope that we, yeah.
Um, Councilwoman, as a, as a city council and as a leader of the city, take your initiative to do that.
I'm talking about all of us.
Someone needs to take the initiative to do that. So, all set? Meeting adjourned.